Microphone on mute until speaking. Additionally, please identify yourself by putting your name on a record each time before you speak. Thank you. Madam Secretary, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Cooper.
Here.
Commissioner Gill.
Here.
Commissioner Graham.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson. Absent. Commissioner Luciano. Absent. Um, Commissioner Mercado.
Here.
Commissioner Siebel.
Here.
Commissioner, Commissioner Vice President Palmaras.
Here.
And Commissioner President Richardson.
Here.
Could someone please mute all of the callers? Oh, we skipped Lana Luciano. I see his name on the screen. Commissioner Luciano.
I'm here.
Thank you. We will omit the salute to the flag since we are conducting this meeting remotely. However, for all of those affected and or lost to COVID-19, let us pause for a moment of silence. Thank you. I have before me certification from the clerk that this meeting is in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Madam Clerk, are there any transcripts to be approved?
Mr. President, there are none.
Madam Clerk, are there any topics of discussion?
Mr. President, there are none.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to the public comment session. Today's meeting is a combined conference board meeting, and we will vote on every item on the agenda. However, since we are meeting remotely, the public have an opportunity to make questions and comments for consideration and can also call in. At this portion of the meeting, the clerk will have additional instructions for all of our callers. Madam Clerk.
Constitutors were given the opportunity to call in or send emails for public comment prior to the meeting. If you're calling in, you will be acknowledged to speak in the order that your call was received. Emails received for public comment will read after all the calls are completed. At this time, our public information officer will announce the caller so they can state their comments or questions and be reminded that you will have three minutes to speak. Please do not have your laptop or any electronic device on while calling in. At this time, we are accepting only calls pertaining to agenda items. And please note, you'll have an opportunity to call back later in the meeting at the designated time for public comment session on non-agenda items. Chalo Malumba, our public information officer, will begin our public comment session now.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chalo Malumba, Public Information Officer for the Essex County Board of Commissioners. Um, we have an issue that we're working on where we're not able to hear any callers right now. If possible, we'll read the email and then we could check back again in a couple of minutes because we're not able to hear any callers at this time.
All right, so you have a technical issues. Um, Mr. President, can we come back to that public comment? Can I notify you when that technical issue is addressed? How would you like to proceed?
Please do. I hope they can get that done in a timely matter because this part of the public comment session is pertaining to agenda items.
Okay, um, we can also take a, um, there's another option. We can take a, and I'll ask the counselor to weigh in. We can take a five or 10-minute break.
Madam Clerk, do you have emails that can be read?
Yes, I do. So I-
We can do that and in the meanwhile, the, uh, the phone line may be back up.
Okay, through you, Mr. President, with that.
Yes, on advice of the council, absolute.
Acceptable.
Yes.
Okay, um, public comments. Uh, for, um, agenda items, uh, they, the, um, we have a e-mail regarding Resolution Three, Advice and Consent, nomination of Jacqueline L. Jones for appointment as Director, Office of Human Resources. Dear County Commissioner of Essex, I oppose and object to Jackie Jones being promoted to the Director of Human Resource because she abuses her power and abuses women. She's presently a defendant in the Civil Action for her abuse of power in her current appointed positions of Deputy Director of Human Resources as the wife of Leeway Jones. This was shown on NBC News Democratic County Chairman, Channel Four. I team exclusives on April 15th, 2021, and on June 2nd, 2021. Link is below. If Commissioners approve this appointment, they are greenlighting further due sincerely, Tiffany Snyder. We have received similar comments, um, objecting to the appointment of Jacqueline Jones were submitted by 56 people, and they will be read into the record in their entirety at a later time. That is all the emails I've received for public comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have the issues resolved.
The issue-
Okay, let's go to public comment session on agenda items only. Mr. Malumba-
The president is resolved, and Chalo, would you re-began public comment for our callers?
Thank you, thank you. Chalo Malumba, Public Information Officer for the Board of Freehold, for the Board of Commissioners, excuse me. Uh, we do have multiple callers waiting. The first caller has a phone number with the last four digits, seven, nine, two, eight. Your last four digits are seven, nine, two, eight. You have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record. You may begin.
Yeah, sure. Um, this is Whitney Strube from Newark, New Jersey. Um, I'm a member of North Jersey DSA, the Democratic Socialists of America. Um, and I'm speaking on Agenda Items 16 through 18 and possibly a little more if I can squeeze it in, but these are all, um, appear to be new contracts or legal services for ICE detainees at Essex County Correctional Facility through, through September 30th, 2021. Um, I'm in favor of these. These are a good step, but it really isn't enough. Um, you know, considering the amount of money that you've taken from ICE in the last decade and also the stakes, um, being so high for those who are held there. I think it's really imperative that you commit to that legal representation following anyone who is currently detained, uh, in Essex but transferred. That is a moral obligation that you've taken on by profiting from this blood money for so long, and I don't see that in the contract. Now, I only had a chance to look at them, um, pretty superficially, so I do want to put a question for the record, which is, will those legal representatives that Essex County is helping fund, will they follow anyone who is transferred? I, just for clarification's sake. My understanding and my assumption is no, but I'd love it if I'm wrong on that. Um, but if the answer is no, it's imperative that you change that. I mean, this, we, you know, again, we in Essex County have a chance to set a national precedent here um, for ending an ICE contract with justice rather than just washing our hands of it. And I think part of that is a commitment to those who are detained, you know, those whose suffering you have profited from for so long. So I really urge you to make sure we take bold steps here that set a national precedent for other counties that can use us as an example for justice, um, not just for a sort of nimbyism that, you know, again, washes our hands of it. Um, and then, you know, at the time I've got remaining, I just want to say two in regard to the state, uh, bill to end future ICE contracts. Um, you know, again, that's a positive first step, but it's also imperative that we end the current ones. Um, and so I think, you know, things that you might consider and things you should do are advocating for an amendment to that bill to end the current ICE contract or just taking your own initiative and ending your own. Um, because as I learned from the comments that you sent me today, the contract expires in 2026, and you don't seem very interested in discussing that in any substance in the comments you sent me. But, uh, you know, you yourselves put out press releases saying that Essex County was ending its contract with ICE. That's verbatim language that Wayne Richardson used, that Jodi Vincenzo used, and I mean, you know, just to be very clear for the record, that is literally untrue by your own account. You are not ending the ICE contract despite having claimed it, and I think you have a moral obligation to catch up with your own rhetoric, end the ICE contract, and advocate for the end of the other ICE contracts in Hudson County and Bergen County. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller, uh, we just have a couple more where we don't have the names, just the numbers. Uh, the last four digits of your phone number are nine, five, two, one. Nine, five, two, one. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. You may begin.
Yes, uh, my name is Jay Arena, Newark, New Jersey. I'm with the Jobs and Equal Rights, uh, for All Campaign, and I'm speaking to, uh, item number 55, the resolution that Commissioner Gill is proposing to support the, uh, legislation in, uh, Trenton that would prohibit state and local entities such as Essex County from entering into an agreement to detain immigrants with ICE. So, um, yeah, that's fine, that, that, uh, bill should be supported, but I want to underscore, it's, it's really insufficient because it does not close or end any of the existing contracts, be they in Hudson, uh, be they with your fellow Democrats in, in Bergen who are carrying out massive repression against our movement, or right here in Essex County. Uh, I think, I did appreciate that Mr. President Ward Richardson sent me an email in regard to my question last week about ending the contract. He did acknowledge, which contradicted the earlier email, uh, that the contract had ended, and in fact, it continues until 2026, and it could be renewed then. Uh, so, yes, support this legislation, pass your resolution for this bill in Trenton, but what you need to do, what you have in your own hands, is to end this contract. Now, Mr. Richardson said, uh, if it does happen, it would be first start in the committee. Well, when is that? What committee is that? And when is the, uh, measure going to be introduced? To close the contract, to end this contract immediately and permanently. Yes, the detainees are being moved out, and we want them released, not moved to other parts of the Gulag system. And you have been quiet, silent about that, which is consent to ICE under the Biden administration, moving them around. It's just as bad as under Trump. Uh, but we need you also to ensure that when the, uh, move, when the attention is removed, that deportation Joe does not, again, cut a deal with ICE to run the, uh, turn the, the county's facility into a, into ICE concentration.
Thirty seconds, Mr. Arena.
So again, what, so my question is, what is, what is this committee that Mr. Richardson referenced in his email to me, which I appreciate the letter? And when is the measure going to be introduced on to permanently close this ICE concentration camp here in Essex County? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, uh, the last one was just a phone number. Uh, your, the last four digits of your phone number are nine, two, six, two. That's nine, two, six, two. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Mary Wizzo. I'm a resident of Newark, New Jersey, and, um, I am, uh, calling today to speak to Agenda Items of 15 through 18, or sorry, 16 through 18 about the legal representation for immigrants, um, as well as item 55. And I'd like to echo what my two colleagues before me have already said. Um, regarding the, uh, legal representation, this is important. It's, it's essential that Essex County provide, uh, legal representation funding. We know that that's critical to getting people released from ICE detention. Um, but it does no good if people are transferred and this money for legal representation does not follow them. One of the arguments that's been made, of course, uh, by you for many years now is that it's better to keep people in Essex County because they'll be, uh, tied to, they'll have counsel, um, and they'll be closer to their family and friends. Now that the facility is being depopulated, um, uh, what can you do to ensure that their legal counsel follows them? We know that that's possible, so what can you do to make sure that that occurs? Uh, so that you are making sure that these folks are being, um, given the best shot at being released as possible. Um, secondly, with regard to the resolution, uh, in support of, uh, the bill to end renewals of immigration detention contracts to the creation of new contracts in New Jersey. Um, I appreciate that, um, you are voting on this resolution, and I would like you to support this resolution and this bill. Um, this is an important step to ending immigration detention in New Jersey, but as my two previous caller, the two previous callers mentioned, this is insufficient as well. So, uh, will you support an amendment to this bill that would end these contracts immediately? Uh, not just upon renewal, because as I've mentioned, your contract actually doesn't end until 2026, when it could be renewed. Um, and if you are, or will you commit to actually ending your contract now with ICE? Um, and as, uh, Jay Arena had asked, right, if this is going to go through a committee, what committee is it going to go through? When is that going to happen? Is the public going to be involved in that process as the public should be, because this is a critically important issue? Um, the final thing that I'd like to say is I also received a response to my questions from last meeting. Uh, I had asked about, um, you, uh, supporting a resolution that calls for the release of detainees, and I was told that in 2020, a resolution was adopted. This resolution, um, I think, is, uh, also insufficient. Um, uh, the 2020 resolution, as far as you remember, called for the release of detainees, but, um, stipulated that these should be people who do not have criminal records. That is a really false, uh, and, uh, immoral and inhumane argument to make. Uh, folks who are held in ICE detention are not held there because of their criminal, uh, records. They, uh, they've already served time for their criminal, uh, any criminal, uh, record they may have or any criminal actions they have taken. So it is inappropriate to add this as a part of your rationale for someone who needs detention or not. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kathy O'Leary. Ms. O'Leary, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. You may begin.
Hello, my name is Kathy O'Leary. I am the New Jersey Region Coordinator for Pox Christi USA. I am calling in support of your resolution number 55, which supports legislation, uh, Bill Number 85207 S30, S3361, which would ban the renewal and expansion of current ICE detention contracts as well as ban new contracts with ICE. As you're aware, Essex County has not ended its ICE contract. The administration has simply told ICE to depopulate the jail of those who are detained for ICE. You may also be aware of a recent letter that attorneys who represent people in ICE detention in New Jersey, including in Essex County, that ICE is transferring people to other facilities without notifying their attorneys and not providing those same attorneys with information about where those people have been transferred after they have done so. Uh, I note that your, uh, your, um, you reference, uh, the legal, uh, defense funds that you, uh, that you allocated towards, uh, people who are detained for ICE in your jail. It seems that it is both in your interest and part of your fiduciary duty to make sure that those funds that you allocated are spent towards the sense of those people who you, who you have incarcerated. So it would behoove you to follow up on this issue. And in addition, I believe it is your responsibility to people whose freedom you have traded for revenue for all these years, uh, to now advocate for their release as opposed to their transfer to other facilities. Lastly, we have learned much over these 10-plus years about the abysmal conditions in the jail. This will not change simply by ending the, of the ICE contract. Uh, at the last ECCF task force meeting, we heard from a woman who traveled away from Trenton to tell the members about her partner who had, had, uh, a broken hand that had gone untreated for a month and was now, uh, he was now unable to use it. It had gone completely numb. Uh, this is the kind of, of thing that we do, that we have, uh, have brought to you time and time again, um, and has been dismissed. The people who are in your jail are people. They are human beings. They are children of God, and it is important that you treat them as stuff.
Thirty seconds, Ms. O'Leary.
Whether they are there for the ICE contract or they are, or you're simply trading their, uh, that much revenue, uh, of their bodies incarcerated for the revenue from other bodies from Union County. Your responsibility does not end towards them. So, uh, I hope that you pass this resolution number 55. I encourage you to. I applaud your efforts, but please know that-
That is your time, Ms. O'Leary. Please finish.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, we do not have any, uh, more callers waiting to speak.
You're muted, Madam Clerk.
Chalo, could you repeat what you just stated, please?
We do not have, we do not have any more callers waiting to speak.
Thank you. Mr. President, the public comment session is completed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, please ensure that the information that's relevant for the administration gets to them, and, uh, as is our, um, practice, all of your, uh, questions and comments will be answered in writing. I think there is one that we can answer now, and that is, there is a committee meeting. Uh, Commissioner Mercado, would you like to address this? Because there is an ICE committee meeting scheduled.
Yes, Mr. President, on, uh, next Wednesday at 5:00, um, on June 16th, we are having a ICE subcommittee meeting. And in the public, we'll have an opportunity to, uh, participate as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Mercado. So let's move on to ordinances and resolutions on introduction and first reading. Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinances or resolutions for introduction and first reading?
Uh, Mr. Pres-
You cut out.
Mr. President, we have none.
Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinances or resolutions for listing purposes only?
Mr. President, we have none.
Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinances or resolutions on second reading and public hearing tonight?
Mr. President, we have none.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolutions one through five, which are all Advice and Consent nominations for the appointments of Department and Division Directors. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, sir, and members of the board. Uh, we have five, uh, outstanding individuals, uh, to present to the board this evening for Advice and Consent. The first is Hassan Mohammed, appointed as Director, Department of Administration and Finance, and County Treasurer. As you know, um, uh, Mr. Acker is no longer in that position. Hassan has been here for a number of years, and now he's standing down as our CFO, and, uh, we are recommending him to become the new Mark Acker, as it were. And, uh, and he'll be forthforth if he's going to follow. Uh, Hassan, if you have any remarks?
Uh, good evening. Um, Hassan Mohammed, CFO. I have, uh, 20 years of governmental accounting experience. Uh, I'm Certified Municipal Finance Officer, Certified Counties, uh, Officer, and Qualified Purchaseion Agent. Uh, I was appointed by the board back in 2017 as a CFO. Um, I would like to thank the County Executive and Administration and Board of Commissioners for, uh, appointing me to this position and continue, um, having, um, to, uh, confidence in me. Uh, and, uh, I would like to wish, uh, a happy retirement for Mr. Acker. Thank you.
Mr. Jackson, just, let's just go through all of, next.
Certainly, Mr. President. Our, our next nominee is Ihab Salama for the appointment of, uh, our Essex County Chief Financial Officer. Mr. Mohammed has moved up, uh, to the treasurer's position. We're recommending Mr. Salama to be our new CFO. Um, and again, looking forward to working with him. He's been here for a number of years as well. Um, and it's done enough standing job to nominate him for this position. Uh, Ihab.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Ihab Salama. Uh, I wanted to thank the County Executive and the County Commissioners for putting the trust in me. Uh, I thoroughly enjoyed the work, my work time at the county for the past five years. Uh, I'm very proud, uh, to work with such a great team of Essex County. Uh, also, I want to thank my predecessor, Hassan Mohammed, for his leadership. Uh, I will continue to strive, improve, uh, my division and meet all the challenges that we face every day. Thank you so much.
Uh, thank you, Ihab. Our next nominee is Jacqueline L. Jones for the appointment of Director of Office of Human Resources. As the Commission, the Board knows, uh, Jackie had been working as the deputy, uh, for, uh, years, actually has been, uh, stepping up to the supplemental on a, on an acting basis for Human Resources and, um, nominating her for the appointment as, uh, Director of the Office of Human Resources. Uh, Jackie.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. I want to take this time to say thank you for your time and this opportunity. Um, as of May of last year, I have been employed with the county for 18 years. Um, and since then, I have been placed in several roles within the county, which has given me the opportunity to understand different departments, roles, responsibilities, which has been very beneficial for me and affected my current role within Human Resources. Uh, just to name a few, uh, Assistant Program Analyst, I developed team communication and information for unit meetings. I gave several presentations to management, highlighting clients and recommendations. Within my role as a program analyst, I have conducted training for the Department of Economic and Division in Training and Development and Employment, uh, with the Employment Specialist Unit, showing them how to use the software that I actually helped create myself, um, to track and find as they come through programs. Within my role as coordinator volunteers, I was the coordinator for department personnel to complete payroll and common attendance. But within my most important role as Deputy Director of Human Resources, I want to thank, uh, Robert Jackson for his leadership as he continues to guide me. Um, everything with the support on advice and just watching him in his role as a director and as a county administrator, and I'm saying former mayor, but he definitely placed a lot of knowledge on me and has molded me and played a part of who I am today in this role. I have collaborated with management to build and implement effective and modern employment policies. I'm organizing- I'm organized for all the employee engagement, which involves fundraisers, the participation with walk, many of you are familiar with the Apache Walk of Midtown, which is the Valley Children's Walk, the Heart Walk, the Breast Cancer Walk, and many others. But I do want to, not to be long, but I do want to say what has definitely brought into my life within the county. For I have been the lead person to be contacted for every COVID matter related within the county, all county employees, along with the county health officer and county council. So also see data collection for each department made during COVID testing, complete all the county work locations. I am notified of any employee that has reported positive testing though, what have been exposed. And I also give the approval for employees to return to work per the COVID leave policy and the CDC guidelines. So I want to end by saying what I'm honored to be considered for this promotion. I started out in a promotional entry level position in 2003, and now as a director. With this appointment, with this appointment and your confirmation, I will be the first African-American female in HR, as the HR Director in the Gishewi County of Essex. In this role, I am committed to helping others succeed. Most importantly, I want to be an inspiration to my two daughters as well as my fourth granddaughter. So again, I am honored to be considered, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Jackie. Our next nominee is Keisha P. Burnett, who is going to be appointed as the Director of Office, of the Office of Small Business Development. Keisha was our DFAB Director, and she's moving on to be the Director now of this very important office. We cannot hear you, Keisha. Good talking. She might be muted, Keisha. Are you in here in the building, right? Yeah, if you need to come up to my office.
You can come down to mine, Mr. Jackson also.
Or Jay's is probably closer.
Yeah, you don't want to talk to us now. You wait till the affirmative action meeting, you'll talk to us then.
The bulletproof vest just got delivered today, Mr. President. Funny you say that. While she's coming, would you like me to move on to Ms. Richardson-Green?
Let's do that.
Okay. As Keisha has moved on to small business, Valentina Richardson-Green, who was working with Keisha for quite a while, will be stepping up to Director in that role. She's been the Acting Director and has done an outstanding job, and we're happy to nominate her. Valentina?
Good afternoon, Honorable Commissioner President and Honorable Commissioner Board. My name is Valentina C. Richardson-Green. I have been employed with the County of Essex. This month will make 18 years. I've been employed with formerly Division of Welfare, now Division of Family Assistance and Benefits. I entered the agency as a family service worker. I had the opportunity to progress and get promoted to Family Service Supervisor, Assistant Administrative Supervisor, Administrative Supervisor, Confidential Assistant, as well as a Deputy Director. And within the last few months, I've had the opportunity to serve in the capacity of Acting Division Head. I want to extend my sincere thanks and humble thanks to the county executive as well as the administrative board with affording me this nomination to continue to serve the constituents of Essex County as well as the employees of DFAB. My goal is to restore the dignity, professionalism, and effective and efficiency of DFAB. That is a direct reflection of the County of Essex's commitment to its employees as well as its residents. Thank you.
Mr. President, I have a guest here.
I'm sorry about that, everybody.
I was saying while you were, while you were in transit, you can duck us for a few minutes, but we're going to have some affirmative action meetings. You won't be able to duck us then.
Yes, sir. President, as I was trying to say, I have been employed by the County of Essex since September of 2015, initially in the capacity as confidential assistant for the Division of Family Assistance and Benefits. And then in February of 2018, and still currently, I was appointed the first Moore Keeper for Essex County. And then on February 1st of 2019, I was appointed Division Head with the Division of Family Assistance and Benefits. I would like to say it's an honor and a privilege to be considered by the county exec as well as the Board of Commissioners to be the Director of the Office of Small Business Development and Affirmative Action, and I graciously thank you for that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. You got your steps in too.
I ran down the stairs.
Thank you, everyone. Okay. Commissioners, any questions or comments for our nominees?
Mr. President, I have a comment.
Commissioner Sebo.
Thank you. I read the resumes of all of the nominees for these positions, and each one has an excellent resume, so I am more than happy to vote in the affirmative for all of them. It's a pleasure that the Essex County has them as employees. Thank you.
Commissioners, anyone else? Hearing none. Commissioner Gill.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I also just want to congratulate all of the appointees or employees, excuse me, tonight, you know, both for their work already for the county and am proud to support their work going forward. So thank you, Mr. President.
Any other commissions? I'd like to echo what my two colleagues have previously stated, that I know each and every one of you are doing outstanding job in your new positions and just look forward to working with all of you. So I have a motion from Commissioner Gill to take Resolutions one through five and a second from VP Amaris. Roll call, Madam Clerk. If you're speaking, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Absent, Commissioner Gill.
I said yes. Hello? Can you hear me?
Are you on mute? Commissioner Gill.
Madam Clerk, I think Ms. Donald, Commissioner Cooper has joined.
Commissioner Cooper is yes.
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 That's a yes from Gill.
Commissioner, yes.
I have a guess from Commissioner Gill, Commissioner Graham.
Yes, for one, two, three, and four.
Commissioner Graham.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Through you, Mr. President. Is there a delay going into the clerk? Because I can hear everybody perfectly, but it seems like the clerk is on a delay. Am I the only one?
Yes.
No, I'm witnessing that as well.
Would you repeat this? No, and I'm having trouble hearing the clerk.
We think they're having issues at the, at the main office where the clerk is at. They're having some issues.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Please continue, Madam Clerk.
All right. Yes. Commissioner Johnson, absent. Commissioner Luciano. Okay. Commissioner? Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Amaris.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes, for one through four, and President not voting on number five.
Mr. President, before we go forward, may I just intervene for one moment?
Absolutely.
I think there, to Commissioner Gill's point, there is obviously a little bit of a delay, and it may not have been clear on Commissioner Graham's vote. So I just think for the sake of the record, and maybe I'm doing Mr. Bolavecchio's job, so forgive me, maybe we should just repeat, because I think she had an extension to some things, if you could just, if I could do that. It did not come clear when she was speaking and the clerk and her were trying to have dialogue.
And I think, in it, thank you, Mr. Vice President. I also think Frio de Luciano had some technical difficulties which may have been cleaned up. So just to make sure everybody's got their vote properly recorded.
And, Mr. President, I'm not sure that Madam Clerk got my affirmative vote.
Thank you, Commissioner Mercado. Commissioner Luciano. Yes. Yes, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, I have all the votes and the, all the agenda resolutions have been moved.
Congratulations, everyone. Good luck. All right. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolutions six through 14, which are all budget assertions. We will read them into the record at a later date. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you noted, there are a number of budget assertions. Item six in particular is the assertion of our American Rescue Plan money that we received last month, I believe it was, or mid last month, in the amount of $77,595,763.50. Represents half of what we were of our allocation, the balance of which we should hit in about a year. And Mr. Abaleo is on the line to answer any question that we have on that one. Item seven is Emergency Rental Assistance Program, similar that we did before, in the amount of $7.8 million. Item eight is a farmer's market budget assertion that we received in the amount of $5,000. Item nine, the budget assertion, CDBG block grant, $79,200. Item 10, support of our area plan for aging services for coronavirus relief, $652,505. That's item 10. Item 11, for monies that we received for the Lakeside Avenue Culver Works, $567,651. Item 12, for four minor COVID repairs that we received from the Department of Transportation, ones we received in the amount of $1,661,203. Item 13, interagency coordinating council money, Department of Health and Rehabilitation, $45,314. Item 14, traffic safety, safety grant, the Office of the State, amount of $10,500. That concludes.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Bolavecchio, any questions?
Yes, Mr. President. Quick question on number 10, which is Division of Aging Services for Area Plan Coronavirus Relief. These are added additional funds, and I wanted to know if there were any, if there's any cash match of the additional funds, because I did see there was a substantial cash match required on the initial fund authorization that came earlier this year.
Mr. Bolavecchio, there is no match.
Great, thank you.
Mr. McInerney?
On Resolution number six, again, this is half of what we'll get, correct? There is another full amount of $77 million coming at some point. If it's a year from now or what, I don't, I don't recall.
Yes, it's a number, equal amount, a year from, we got the original amount, so it would be, it should be mid-May of 2022.
Okay, I'm getting feedback. Is anybody else hearing feedback?
Yes.
Yes.
They need somebody to go on.
All right.
Can we move on to some of the callers or something? I, I, I don't know.
Okay, I just wanted, the $77 million, just the board's identification is broad flexibility. It could be used to support public health responses to COVID-19, much like the funds that we received previously that were used for that purpose. It also is broad, very broad the language that it can address negative economic impacts. Mr. Abaleo is on the line, maybe he can expound on that a little bit. What's surprising is that it can also replace public sector revenue losses. So for instance, I would assume that in the case of the county, the revenue losses that were incurred in parks and recreation via the zoo admission fees, park fees, and things of that nature that were extremely low, as well as, as well as the golf courses. Curious to know whether or not these funds can be used to bring those amounts back to what they were, and how is that handled from a budgetary standpoint? If we had a deficit in the revenues in the prior years, and it's my understanding that you, some of this stuff deals with the fact, the effects of COVID, is it just for this year, or can we go back to 2020 and say, you know, there's that $10 million we didn't collect in Parks and Recreation? Can we, can we take $10 million of this $77 million and utilize it for that, increase our fund balance, a dollar for dollar? The other thing it can be used for is this premium pay for essential workers, and that's up to $13 an hour in additional compensation. Don't know really how that works, but it's listed, and it also, that could be retroactive as well. And the last that I was able to see was the water sewer and broadband infrastructure, well beyond the COVID requirement, you know, any requirements generated by COVID. This is something that can be used to improve your sewer system if you're a municipality with utility, also your broadband infrastructure. This, the funds must be incurred by December 24th of 2024, and they must, the projects they fund must be completed and paid for by December 31st, 2026. So again, if, I don't know if Mr. Abaleo can answer that now or sometime in the future, about the, where does the revenue loss funds, where does the funds to make up for the revenue loss, does that go retroactive the prior year?
Mr. Abaleo?
If he's not on the phone, you know, I can talk to him, I can speak to Anthony directly on this and get back to the board.
We, I can just say that we are allowed to go back to March 3rd, I believe it is, of 2020. So, but I will, I'll have Mr. Abaleo reach out to you directly, Mr. President.
And if we do, if we, if we're going to do that, you know, what's the fiscal impact? I mean, obviously that, you know, it seems like it goes right to fund balance, but we'll see. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Jackson. I'll speak to Anthony back.
That's all we have, Mr. President, on those items.
Thank you, Mr. McInerney. We have some technical difficulties with the clerk's line. She really can't hear and want to make sure that the record is correct and preserved and the recordings are picked up. We're gonna need to take a short break until we fix this issue. Mr. Polavecchio, do we need to?
We don't need to make a motion? To adjourn, yeah. A motion to adjourn, it could be for ten minutes, it can be, you know. Okay. Fifteen minutes, fifteen minutes.
So we need a motion, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn for ten minutes.
I'll second, Mr. President.
Okay. All in favor?
Come back at six oh five.
Six oh five, eyes have it, so move. We'll come back at six oh five. Try to get these technical difficulties taken care of. Thanks, everyone.
Mr. President, I don't know, yeah, I was gonna say, I don't know it, but Madam President, Madam Clerk, be welcome to come to my office if that works, if you can hear it. If that works.
It works for me.
Also mine, Mr. President.
Well, she can't come to both.
Well, she has the point of course.
Just for the record, the administration is fighting over our clerk.
Yeah.
I will, I will say, Mr. President, that I'm not sure what this is all related to, but Mr. Jackson's bond is a little low. Mr. Cultri is coming in a little bit louder for me. I don't know if that's right. Maybe that might be better for the clerk.
To Mr. Cultri's office.
He sounds, he's louder than Mr. Jackson, as far as I can tell, not much of a-
A deeper voice, Mr. Vice President.
That is true.
The same with me. I'm having trouble hearing Robert Jackson, and I'm not having any trouble hearing Jay Cultri.
Commissioner Cooper?
Here.
Commissioner Gill?
Here.
Commissioner Graham?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson, absent. Commissioner Luciano?
Here.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Siebel?
Here.
Commissioner, Vice President Pamares?
Here.
Commissioner President Richardson?
I am here. Mr. Jackson, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item fifteen is a resolution to, consent resolution pursuant to NJSA forty thirty-seven A for the instant sale of charter school revenue bonds for Team Charter Schools located in the city of Newark. And Mr. Bernard Davis is here representing ECIA as well as the Senate. Sounds like somebody needs to do smaller things.
Mr. Jackson, we're gonna take fifteen separately, and also Vice President Pamares wants to speak on number six separately as well. He has some comments he wants to make on Resolution number six. Fifteen is gonna, is separate from, from what?
Number six, Mr. President?
Yeah, Vice President Pamares wants to speak on that.
Thank you, Mr. President. I simply just wanted to have number six explain in a little bit greater detail as the budget insertion. I know Mr. Abaleo was on the phone, simply for the benefit of the public. We had discussed this in leadership last week, just to give an overall, what basically this money was for. Subsequently, though, I think that Mr. McInerney's question sort of elaborated a lot of that. So I'm okay with that unless Mr. Abaleo feels any overall explanation hasn't been addressed about what it's all about. But that was it, pretty much.
Mr. Abaleo is having a little bit of difficulty connecting, so I don't know whether he speaks or couldn't be heard.
Mr. President, if I may, I, Mr. Abaleo called me, yes. Mr. Abaleo called me during the break there, and we will hook up something together that's fairly comprehensive and explaining the use of these, you know, benefits, and we'll present that in a memo to the board. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. McInerney. And this is Resolution six through fourteen. Commissioners, any questions or comments on Resolutions six through fourteen? Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. President.
Commissioner Cooper?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question about item seven. Can you give us an overview on how it's gonna work? Is there a lottery? What's the criteria? You know, is there any restrictions for two-family, three-family, multifamily? I was just thinking about some of the feedback I got about the DCA, you know, when they did their emergency rental, it was some limitations. So are there any?
Through you, Mr. President. Commissioner, yes, there are some limitations. Income, not eighty percent of the area median. The assistance is up to twelve months, but also extended for another three months beyond that. The, and this is for people who have been impacted by COVID-19. Would say, though, that the definition of impacted is pretty generous in terms of what its impact looks like. And this is for folks particularly who are unemployed, or maybe looking at unemployment down the road, or face unexpected bills. We're gonna be engaging about four nonprofits to screen applications. It's all gonna be done online, for folks who might be eligible. And Director Ramos has put together, again, about four nonprofits that are gonna help us out with screening applications. We're also working with the court system through, folks who are in the foreclosure process with the courts, we're working there to see if we can't come up with a macro solution, meaning if Judge Grant, let's say, has ten, fifteen million dollars worth of cases that could be resolved, we may be able to do in one fell swoop a whole, you know, a number of folks who are having difficulties. So we're tacking it from a whole, different points of view, and hopefully, we've also had conversations with public service, like your task, to see if there's a way to help out even with utility bills, which this enables us to do as well. So we're tacking it on a whole bunch of fronts, and we think we're gonna make a decent dent in it. But, you know, bear in mind, this too is forty percent of our allocation. So between the money that we received last year and the money this year, it's about thirty-four million dollars of rental assistance money we're gonna be able to hopefully help out Texas County residents.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Can you give us a breakdown on the monies that we use to date, like the towns, just by town, like where it went? Thank you.
Just so you know, too, Commissioner, we've just put in place the, they were delayed in getting us out the rules and regs, but we haven't allocated any money as yet. We've got, we have a bunch of applications. We can give you some application information, but we've yet to distribute dollars, but that should be happening in the next thirty to sixty days.
Oh, okay, great. That's, all right, those were some questions that I had, received from people. Are we gonna use the same organization that we previously used, or we're using new ones?
These, these are, again, through you, Mr. President, these are some of the organizations that the director and his team have used in the past for other programs. And I believe, Mr. Cultri can correct me, but I believe there are about four of them that were, that were using, responded to the RFPs, it may have been more, but that we selected. So these are entities that Director Ramos and his team are extremely comfortable with in helping us to screen and vet applications. Because one, the good news is, we're gonna need the help, because we're looking at a bunch of applications, and, you know, we're not able to handle it in-house. So the good news is that there's been a lot of response.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooper. Okay. Where were we? Mr. Polavecchio?
Mr. President?
Yes. Commissioner Gill?
I have just a question. So, so just to follow up on Mr. McInerney's question. So we'll, we'll kind of get something which gives us an overview of the, of the spending. Will that continue to include the additional spending that hasn't necessarily had to come before the board, but I, but I assume is part of our either CARES or Rescue Act dollars, like the robo-calls and things of that nature?
Through you, Mr. President, yes. Vaccination and testing-related, Commissioner, yes.
Okay. So look, I'll, thank you, Mr. Jackson. I'll, I'll, you know, through the, you know, through, ask Mr. McInerney to, or I think we've seen some of it, or maybe I, maybe I have missed it, but just looking to see kind of a recap on that, on that spending, you know, that's, you know, directly related to the vaccination, or rental assistance, or what, you know, anything that's already been spent. You know, I think it would be good for, I know, I know it didn't need board approval, but I think it would be good for the board to be made aware of what that, you know, what that spending has been and may potentially continue to be.
Sure. Mr. President, can I make a comment on that as well?
Absolutely. Commissioner, I mean, Commissioner, Mr. McInerney.
So with regard to the list of those expenditures, when Mr. Gill was president, he instructed me to keep a running total of all aid that was coming in based on, based on COVID-19. That included not only the hundred-and-thirty-nine million similar-type grants that we've got. You see one on the agenda today in Resolution number ten. And I've done so. What, what, where those expenditures are is a listing that I've been given on several occasions by the Finance Department that itemizes by a department those expenditures, not as much in detail, but as, but also more like by vendor, by vendor and by amount. So I don't know if we're gonna see the level of detail in those reports that say what it was used for, but I'll see if that can be expanded. But those, those reports are readily available, and I will get an updated one, you know, as well.
Thank you, Mr. McInerney. Mr. Polavecchio, did you want to chime in at all?
No, I don't have any other questions. I asked my question on this.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing none. I have a motion from Commissioner Graham and a second from Commissioner Cooper to take six through fourteen as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Siebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson, absent. Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolution number fifteen, which is from the ECIA bond issuance and sale. Please read it into the record at a later date. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you said, this is a, asking for consent resolution on part of the board to support, to allow for the issuance and sale of charter school revenue bonds. We have Mr. Davis from, representing ECIA, as well as representatives of the Team Charter School. I will turn it over to Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Thank you, everybody, for your time. On the phone with us is Steve Rother, who's the Executive Director of the ECIA. You all know him. Leah Sandbank, who's a partner with Mannam and Scotland Embowman, counsel to the school. Gabriella De Filippo, Chief Operating Officer of the Kip Schools. Steve Small, Chief Financial Officer of the Kip Schools. And Dwight Berg of Public Economics, who's their financial consultant. We're looking for your support for a bond resolution that was approved by the ECI board on May twenty-fifth, authorizing the issuance of up to sixty million dollars of charter school revenue bonds for the benefit of the Friends of Team Charter Schools and Team Academy Charter School. On May twenty-fourth, the county executive provided us pre-approval to the bond resolution. As noted, we're seeking the Commissioner's approval of the projects authorized by the bond resolution pursuant to Section fifty-six of the County Improvement Authority's law. The bonds are expected to receive an investment-grade rating from Standard and Poor's and will be publicly underwritten by the nationally-recognized underwriting firm of PNC Capital Markets. Should point out that neither the authority nor the county will be in any way financially responsible for the payment of debt service on the bonds. These bonds are conduit bonds that will be payable solely from the revenues generated by the academy. Team Academy has sought the assistance from the authority in order to avail itself of long-term tactics and financing, which will save the school considerable revenue each year. The bond issue will permit Friends of Team to create two state-of-the-art school facilities from two aging and unused buildings in Newark. They have already put one of the buildings into service, which in fact was the former county vocational school located at three-thirty North Thirteenth Street. That facility has been put back in service, and as part of this bond issue, Team plans to spend another six million, seven-hundred thousand dollars on that facility. The other facility that's subject to the resolution is one located at two-seventy-five Sussex Avenue. And that facility will receive a complete gut rehabilitation to the tune of about forty-one million dollars in bond proceeds. We have representatives of the Kip Schools, the Executive Director of the Authority, their counsel and financial consultant on the phone to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Mr. Polavecchio?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had, Mr. McInerney and I had the opportunity first to speak with Mr. Davis and Mr. Rother at the Board's Leadership Meeting, and then we had a follow-up conference call with them late last week. So I was glad to hear that the information Mr. Davis just provided to the board. Just a couple of questions to follow up on. I think it was mentioned, but if it wasn't, this is seeking the Board's consent to the issuance of these bonds, but there is no guarantee, no guarantee of payment of these bonds being given by the county at all. So it doesn't constitute any indebtedness or obligation on the end of the county, which is positive. And I think Mr. Davis referred to this as conduit, as conduit bonds, meaning, in fact, this is one of the things that the ECIA and other improvement authorities are formed to do, is to provide bond financing. I do have a question, and I don't know if this goes to Mr. Davis or to, to the Friends of Team Charter Schools. In reading the decision memorandum from Mr. Rother, there's reference to the project facility being leased to North Star Academy of Newark. So I know we're talking about two different locations, which are referred to as facilities here. One is North Thirteenth School, the other one's Sussex Avenue School. So I wanted to know what role does North Star Academy have in this? And when we're talking about project facility, I just wanted to confirm what that means.
Yeah, let me, let me correct that. I apologize for that. That was a leftover from prior memorandum that we had done for the Commissioners. Uh, these are all for, uh, the Team Academy Charter School.
So you, Mr. President. So you, Mr. President, please, uh, um, I would like to remind everyone, um, please state your name and, uh, association for the record each time you speak for, uh, recording and minute purposes.
Yes, uh, I hear that was Bernard Davis who responded.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Davis. So North Star, that was just a typo. North Star has no function in this, in this transaction.
That is correct. That's Bernard Davis.
Uh, I don't have any other questions at this time. Mr. McInerney.
Um, I don't, you know, I don't have any other questions that haven't been, been answered. The main, uh, issue here was, uh, getting confirmation from Bond Counsel, um, that the, um, bonds are not guaranteed by the ECIA nor the County of Essex. Um, and so that's, that's the key concern. Um, the other, uh, issue that I raised, we were discussing was whether or not, you know, the, the ECIA, uh, looked at these, um, transactions in any ways that, um, provide due diligence and, and there is levels of diligence done, although the county's not responsible for the debt on this. Uh, I still feel that at times, you know, we should look at deals, uh, and, and provide some level of, of review, which the ECIA has done. But also, uh, the PNC Capital, uh, who is underwriting this has done a review and our Bond Counsel has. Um, so there's, there's, there's a number of layers of review on this. That doesn't guarantee the bonds will get paid, uh, as Mr. Davis pointed out in our conversations. The bonds are not guaranteed by the rent of the school, but, um, just by the, by the guarantee of the school. Um, uh, so that said, I think from our standpoint, without getting in the weeds on this, our standpoint is that nobody at the county level, both ECIA or County of Essex, is responsible or guaranteeing any part or all this debt.
Yeah, Steve Rother here. There was another level of review that hasn't been mentioned to you. And that is, in addition to having Bernard Davis as our Bond Counsel, we hired John Drakowitz as our Issuers Counsel. So we had two attorneys literally look through all of these documents.
Yes, and, and to be honest with you, I did speak to John Drakowitz this afternoon about it, just, uh, not that there was anything missing, just to get it, you know, a little bit more of a real review of his, what role he played. And so again, uh, Bond Counsel at that level also was, wasn't, you know, wasn't bound, including Mr. Davis, who's an expert in this field.
Mr. President, I have some questions.
Commissioner Sevo.
Thank you. Uh, perhaps this is curiosity. Uh, first of all, you stated that 275 Sussex Avenue was going to be totally renovated, correct?
Uh, this is Bernard Davis. I was correct.
Okay, now, uh, I was on the Essex County Vocational School Board when we sold the 13th, the North 13th Street School and all the, uh, um, students were moved to West Market Street at that time. And nothing much has been done to that building since we sold it. Are you going to renovate that building?
Uh, I'll permit one of the representatives to answer that question.
I can answer it. This is Gabriella Di Filippo. We are doing an interior renovation of that building. We had to do some reconfiguring of interior spaces for classrooms. So it's not a gut renovation. It's, uh, an interior renovation to allow us to offer the number of classrooms we need. Uh, so cosmetic improvements, uh, paint, new floor. Uh, we are doing some infrastructure improvements, like a new roof. Um, we've installed some bathrooms previously, so it really is mostly interior. You wouldn't see a lot of difference from the outside.
What about air conditioning? There have been a lot of complaints lately, uh, because of the weather and the schools are so hot because of the weather we're having. And what are you going to do about air conditioning?
We make sure that all of our classrooms, uh, have air conditioning units installed. If there isn't a central, oh, sorry, Gabriella, Gabriella Di Filippo responding again, sorry. Um, we make sure that all of our classrooms have air conditioning units installed if there isn't already a central AR system in the building.
Because I don't believe there's.
Yeah, there, there is not. So each of the classrooms has, has cooling units in them.
That will be included in the renovation?
In the classrooms that we haven't already installed the classrooms in, but yes, correct.
And the other school will be totally renovated?
The other school will have central air. That is correct. Gabriella, again, sorry.
Thank you for answering my questions.
You're welcome.
Mr. President, if I may.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Davis, for a very strong overview there. Something that we discussed at leadership, that we wanted to ensure we got a full picture, and I think we got that today. Um, from your, uh, position on the ECIA, if you can describe to us why it is you select these kinds of projects? And also, if we could hear from school representatives, kind of give us an overview of your school, how many students, things of that nature, to give us a better sense of what's going to be happening at these buildings.
Uh, Mr. Rother, do you want to respond?
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll, I'll respond. I'll respond as to why, uh, why we accept, uh, these projects.
Who, who, who's speaking?
Steve Rother. Steve Rother is speaking. Uh, we accept these projects and, and other very similar projects where uh, the, the sponsors are not-for-profit that are providing services to, uh, citizens throughout, um, the county. Uh, we also accept those, uh, kinds of financings where there is, uh, fee income that would come in, uh, that is going to be used for the benefit of the county. Obviously, uh, Essex County Improvement Authority uses its profits, uh, to funding, uh, projects on behalf of Essex County. So where we can generate revenue for that purpose and we're doing it for not-for-profits that are serving residents throughout the county, those are the kind of projects that we want to do, particularly where there is no liability for either the county or the authority.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And, uh, can we hear maybe from, uh, one of the school representatives to give us an overview of the school? How many students you'd anticipate there and any special programs that you may be running out of these buildings?
Sure, this is, uh, Steve Small, uh, speaking for the school. Um, uh, thanks, everyone, for your time and engagement on the topic. Um, yes, uh, can I expand on this if helpful, but, uh, at, at a high level, each of the facilities, we're talking about this evening, when fully enrolled, will serve just over a thousand students, uh, and in both cases, in grades kindergarten through eighth. Um, the 13th Street facility, uh, will have enrollment of roughly that amount in this coming school year. Um, and the 275, uh, Sussex Project will be, uh, renovated over the course of this, uh, next year or so and open next summer with about, um, half of its anticipated full capacity. Uh, and then it will, uh, grow over the first couple of years, uh, to that, you know, full thousand plus student, uh, figure. Uh, and in total, uh, in case it's helpful, uh, across the city of Newark, in the 21, 22 school year, uh, we will, uh, educate at, uh, these facilities and the other ones in which we operate, uh, about, uh, around 6,000 students.
Thank you. Mr. President, that's all I got. Thank you.
Mr. President, this is Commissioner Luciano. I have a question.
Sure, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. I'm sorry you can't see me on the screen. I had some technical difficulties with the, um, I don't know if it's the thunderstorms or what was happening. But my, my question regarding this, um, and, and maybe Mr. Rother or Mr., um, uh, or, or, or someone on our end, um, can answer this question is, and Mr. Rother said that the reason why Essex County and the ECIA is even involved in this is that we're making, the county is going to generate or make revenue. Do we know how much that revenue is? That's the first tier question I have. And then the second tier question I have is, you know, why, why we would get involved in making revenue off an entity or a school that's making revenue off of taxpayers in Newark? Because if I'm not mistaken, charter schools are generating revenue, right? That's how they're going to pay back this. I don't know how much they make, and I would wonder if maybe that's a question we should ask. Is, you know, how much does Team actually make revenue-wise yearly, um, on the back of taxpayers? And then, you know, why would we, as county-elected officials, support also making revenue on the back of the taxpayers of Newark? You know, if we're making, you know, if we're making revenue off someone who's making revenue off of taxes, we're just as the same, if not any different. So my question is, I don't know if we can get those exact raw numbers, but I'm just a little confused because for the, for us as, as a county to be involved, it sounded like Mr. Rother said we're making money or we're generating revenue. So I, I don't know if someone could kind of tie this together for me, so I feel more comfortable voting for it. Because right now I don't feel comfortable making revenue off the taxpayers of Newark.
Uh, I, I can tell you that the, the fee income that, uh, improvement authorities can earn or fix by, uh, the state of New Jersey. And they, they are, um, a fraction of percent of the initial amount and then a smaller fraction, uh, actually, uh, .1% of the balance of the bond issue each year. So it's a relatively small percentage. But it is, it is funds that we can earn from the many projects that we finance, uh, to, uh, make yet other projects that the taxpayers throughout, uh, the county can benefit from. Uh, we may be taking it from, from, um, taxpayers, so to speak, but it's going back to taxpayers in projects that they, they use throughout the county.
For you, Mr. President, a reminder, uh, please, every time you speak, please state your name.
I'm sorry, Steve Rother again. Sorry, sorry, Steve Rother again answering that question.
Mr. President. Mr. McInerney? Yes, this, this, uh, we had a similar discussion with Mr. Rother and Mr. Davis. Mr. Rother was, uh, pointed out that the, and, and rightfully so, Essex County Improvement Authority has an operating budget that has to be funded. And if it's not funded by fees that it earns, um, via these types of transactions, it has to be funded by the county, which would be taxpayer dollars as well. Um, in addition, he, he made it clear that revenues from the airport that the ECIA controls and operates, uh, are inclusive to the cost of the airport. Therefore, any, any windfall from airport revenues cannot be used for his operating budget. Uh, yeah, unless it's specifically allocated, I would assume. But, but, um, so it, it was pretty clear that there are expenses of ECIA. I want to remind the board that I, uh, have been following it and trying to get the board abreast from time to time, you know, a very extensive lawsuit that's been happening in the County of Essex. And I won't go to much more detail than that, but we did have a private meeting. Uh, we called Rotherin at one point in time about a year ago to discuss it, to see where it's at. That, that's still going on. And the fees, legal fees are, are exorbitant. So the ECIA uses whatever resources it can gain from its purpose in order to pay bills like that as well, otherwise, again, and that would have to come to the County of Essex. We've been doing these deals forever, both private and public. Uh, on the public side, we, we used to do a lot with the County of Essex through the ECIA. And, um, that's come to some sort of, you know, end. Um, you know, back, uh, before the, um, the DiVincenzo administration, it was handled that way. County finances were going through the ECIA. So, so that kind of dried up on the ECIA side too, because the county was paying fees. Um, they're still paying fees on those older bond issues, but there's nothing new that I'm, that I. So that, that is what the conversation was about when we discussed these, these fees and, uh, you know, I, I, I think for, uh, Commissioner Luciano, um, point is, is, is answered. Um, given both the explanation from myself and Mr. Rother. At least I hope it is.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. McInerney, but I think you only answered half of the Commissioner's question. The other half was, uh, I don't think you can answer. I think it was directed to, uh, Team and, uh, the other folks. There was another part to the question. Commissioner Luciano, you want to restate your question?
Yeah, well, just again, and thank you for everybody, again, I, we're making revenue off somebody who's making revenue. So my question becomes, at what point do we do our due diligence or do we just stamp this along? And do we ask the question of, well, how much revenue do you make that you can pay back, you know, the tens of millions of dollars that you're borrowing? You know, do we have a threshold? Do we, you know, do we, do we get to know that, that question to know? Well, okay, we'll, we'll stamp off and sign it if we know they make $200,000 a year in revenue? Or do they have to make $20 million a year in revenue? Do, do you see my question? It's like, you're asking us to go out there and support the ECIA to support the bonds, but I don't know how much you make or how much you don't make. I don't know if anyone else on the board knows this answer, or even if Frank McInerney, our budget consultant, knows that answer. Who, who are we supporting to take a loan? Are we supporting somebody that we know is in the black? Or are they in the red? How do we know this if we don't see any raw numbers?
It's Steve Rother, but if, if, if I can point out that, that that is done by the rating agencies. And that was mentioned earlier, uh, by Mr. Davis. Uh, the rating agencies very carefully analyze all of that. It's not as critical for the authority of the county because we're not liable. But the rating agencies, which is putting a rating on this bond, is very much concerned with whether they will be able to, uh, generate enough revenue to pay all of these expenses.
And, and Mr. Rother, you're saying we're not liable, but we're also making money off the deal. So I, again, you know, I'm going to circle back to, you know, and put my hat on. I, I just, again, I'm not comfortable. I don't care who the entity is. I, I just, you're asking us as a board to vote and support something and somebody and some entity that we don't know anything about. Then the rating agency should, should, should share with their findings with us. That would be my, my feeling. If not, again, I, I'm not comfortable with it. I can't speak for the other board members. I'm not opposed to it. I'm just saying I'm not comfortable because I don't know what's going on here. I have no idea except someone saying that the Essex County is making some kind of money off this and you want our approval, but, but we really don't even know if that's ever going to come to fruition because we don't know if we're loaning money to someone who's making money or how much money they're making.
Mr. President, that's the question.
Mr. Paul Avecky.
Mr. President.
It, it's the question, uh, from Commissioner Luciano. Does he want to know how the, um, the school, I'm calling it the school. Sorry, I'm just trying to get their names. The Friends of, uh, Team Charter Schools, how they plan to repay this debt? Is that the question? Where they're getting those funds from?
Right, that's the question. Yeah.
Okay, so I, I think there's probably someone on the call who can answer how the debt is going to be repaid by the Friends of, uh, Team Charter. There's somebody there?
Uh, Steve Small, could you respond?
Yes. Yes, sorry, it's just on mute. This is Steve Small. Um, sure, it's, it's a good question. Thank you. Um, the, the school, uh, forgive me if any of this is, uh, background knowledge that you already have and therefore redundant, but I'll be brief and then can expand on whatever is helpful. Um, so the, the, the school is, uh, publicly funded like all other, uh, charter schools in the state. Um, we receive, uh, about 90% of the first student funding, um, that the. um that the neighboring uh district uh North Public Schools receive uh for their students. So almost as much, but not quite. Uh, and out of that uh per student funding that we receive each year based on our enrollment and the per, the per student amount that's determined by the, the State Department of Education and through the budget process, we're utilizing a portion of that to uh pay rent um to uh, in this case, um Friends of Team for the 275 Sussex property. And in the case of the North 13th Street property to pay debt service on the loan. The um, the amount of our revenue that we're paying to go, uh, to, to fund the, the rent payments and the debt payments amounts to um uh about 10% or so of the amount we receive in revenue per year. So in other words, the other 90% goes towards um all the other expenses associated with providing education. Uh, and as was in terms of our ability to uh make the payments and sustain, you know, our operations and continue to provide uh strong education. Uh, that is uh vetted by a number of folks. Um, S and P uh among them currently have an investment grade rating from S and P. Um, and then also the folks who will be uh buying the bonds will be doing their own assessment to ensure that they believe uh that we'll be able to repay the, the debt in full. Happy to expand on any of that if helpful.
Yeah, and, and one other point should be made, this is Steve Rother again. One other point should be made, that if not-for-profit didn't come to improvement authorities around the state like the ECIA and pay these fraction of a percent by way of a fee, they would not get tax-exempt financing, and they would have to pay a heck of a lot more in order to finance these projects.
Um, Mr. President, this is Commissioner Cooper.
Commissioner Cooper, go ahead.
Um, um, the gentleman who was just speaking, can you please expand upon that? If they did not receive the financing from us um through this um mechanism, what would the interest rates look like? How would the project be financed?
Go, go to a bank and, and have to pay taxes, taxable uh investment.
Steve, Steve Rother, but, but, but perhaps Bernard, you can, you, you can expand upon that for me, please.
No, no, hold on, no, no. My, my question is, is simple. Does this process, the interest rate is what? If they weren't using this process and they went through the conventional bank financing as you just described, the interest rate would be what?
I, I, I can't, I can't express that. I know it'll be significantly higher. Someone is on the phone, I'm sure here, who can give us some idea about the, the spread there.
Uh, Dwight Berg is on the phone. Uh, Dwight, could you?
Yeah, this is the. Hi, this is Dwight Berg, municipal advisor for Friends of Team Charter Schools. Uh, tax-exempt bonds receive favorable interest rates because the bondholders don't have to pay income tax at the federal or state level on the interest that they receive. And that translates, in our case, we're thinking we're going to get an interest rate of around, uh, for the longest coupons, around 2.7 to 3%. If we had to do the bonds as taxable, we would have probably at least a 20% higher interest rate. So that would be, you know, closer to 3 to 3.4%. So we would be, you know, paying about 0.3 to 0.4% higher interest rate, which is about three to four times the fee that Mr. Rother was talking about.
Um, earlier in the presentation, someone said that the county isn't liable. What does that mean exactly? If, if, if First Team, am I saying their name correct, default on this debt, who's responsible for repaying it?
Uh, this is Bernard Davis. Uh, the, the bondholders uh will have a mortgage on each of the facilities. Um, the facilities could be reutilized uh to another school. Um, but if there is a default, uh, they would not get paid. The um, they get paid from whatever liquidated uh fees would come in from the liquidation of the facilities. Uh, there is also a debt service reserve fund equal to about 10% of the bond amount that'll secure the bondholders. So if there's a short-term default, in other words, there's a downturn in the uh population of the schools, uh, but the schools are still viable. Uh, the reserve fund would be there to bridge the gap in the revenues, and the bonds would remain outstanding. Uh, but if there's a complete uh collapse, uh, the facilities would be liquidated, uh, sold, and bondholders would be paid. And uh, uh, nobody would be responsible after that for the uh shortfall.
What's, what's the term of this process? Is it 10 years, 20 years? How long is it?
Uh, this is Bernard Davis. The uh bond issue could go out for 35 years.
Okay. Is it, and are the schools only open to Newark residents? Or is this one of the schools that's open to kids in the region or the county? How does this one work, these two schools?
Uh, I'll refer to Gabriella on that. Yes, Gabriella DiColippo. Um, sorry, Steve, I got this one. Um, the uh, our schools are uh open to Newark residents first. And if there aren't enough, there isn't enough demand from Newark students, we can enroll students from other districts. But we typically have enough demand from Newark residents, but we fill our open seats with Newark students. Um, we do have families who do move outside of Newark into adjacent communities in Essex County. Um, and they can, they can remain in our schools. They are legally allowed to do so.
Um, my, my last question, Mr. President. How long has First Team Charter School been around? How long has that been in business?
Gabriella again, uh, we opened our first school in Newark in 2002. So 19 years.
Commissioner Cooper?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'm done. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? Commissioner Gill?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just following back up on this question of who the borrower could be. So, so did, did the char- did uh Team Charter School explore any other potential borrower besides the improvement authority to, to issue these bonds?
Hi, uh, this is Bernard Davis again. Um, traditionally, uh, we had done these bond issues through the New Jersey Economic Development Authority. And uh, we've done several for Team and uh North Star and some of the other charter schools in the area. Um, I don't know if it's uh due to the current volume of loans that the authority is saddled with in uh dealing with the COVID uh downturn. Um, but um, their ability to move ahead with the bond issue has become very unpredictable. Uh, as you can see, the intent is with Sussex Avenue to open by next summer. And we need predictability and timing is essential to the financing. Um, so uh they have uh come to the ECIA uh as a vehicle for issuing the bonds.
Mr. President? Commissioner Gill, were you done?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. President, I'm done.
Mr. McInerney? Uh, just so we're clear here, who's borrowing the money? My understanding, and I'll ask Mr. Davis to confirm it, that there's a conduit entity that borrows the money uh and um leases the, leases the schools, uh, goes into a lease arrangement with the school. Can you explain that, Mr. Davis?
Yeah, I'll uh, uh, ex- expand on that. Uh, this is Bernard Davis. Um, uh, the 275 Sussex Avenue uh location uh will be owned by the entity, the Friends of Team Charter Schools, uh, whose uh IRS designation is to support the Team Charter School Academy. Um, the vocational school site was purchased by the academy itself because it was part of the um RFP process for the sale, and it had to be a school that was purchasing it. So the money that will be utilized for that facility will, uh, well, the, the borrower under the bond issue will be uh the Friends of entity. And with respect to the uh 13th Street facility, they will turn around and lend a portion of those bond proceeds uh to the academy uh for the purpose of renovating the facility. So about $6,700,000 of the bond proceeds will be in the form of a loan. Uh, but with respect to the 275 Sussex Avenue facility, uh, it will be, as described, a lease between the Friends of and uh the academy.
So, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. McInerney, could I just ask a follow-up question?
Commissioner Gill, go ahead.
I, I just, so I just want to, again, make sure that I, that I understand though. So, so, so as to what was just described, the, the authority, just going off the language in the, the resolution, the authority is under, is authorized under state statute to finance public facilities. Is that correct?
Bernard Davis has correct.
Okay, and, and however, the, the borrower um in this case is a separate, the borrower is the Friends of Team Charter School Incorporated. However, again, we're, we're, I guess this is a question for both Mr. Paul Levesque and Mr. McInerney as well. We're, we are, we are capable that just described meets the threshold for financing something for a public building. Probably doing a poor job or taking. Getting complicated, just described to us. Uh, so what you're telling us is that, that meets the test for the improvement authority to finance uh, to finance something for a public building.
So Commissioner Gill, it's Michael Paul Levesque. I uh, if I have your question right, I'm going to ask the ECIA to expand on it. I don't think the ECIA or improvement authorities are limited to funding for just for public buildings. Um, I think that's a portion of what they can do, but I think they can go beyond that. I think Mr. Rother talked about what they like to do and help any nonprofits amongst the groups that they finance. But I would ask Mr. Davis and Mr. Rother to expand on that. My point is, I don't think they're limited to public, public entities or public.
Uh, this Bernard Davis, that's correct. Um, and uh part of our role as bond counsel is to uh give an opinion as to the due authorization of the bonds. And uh this is fully within uh the purview of the County Improvement Authority's law to issue bonds for projects of this type. Uh, one of the uh many types of facilities that an improvement authority can finance is for not-for-profit entities. And uh both entities in this case, the Friends of and the academy, are, uh, have received their 501(c)(3) designations from the Internal Revenue Service. So they're fully qualified to uh undertake these projects under the County Improvement Authority law.
Mr. President, can I add something to that? Mr. McInerney? Uh, I just wanted to bring up another uh ECI financing that the board approved. It might have been a couple of years ago, but it was $100 million financing through the ECI for Covanta. Uh, Covanta was, is the operator of the resource recovery facility, the incinerator. Uh, I think I got that right, Covanta is, is that correct, Steve? Is that the correct corporate name?
Yes, yes, I think that's correct.
That, that was a $100 million uh deal that we did where, where uh, we were, again, ECIA earned fees on, and we were merely just a conduit. We put no personal guarantee on, and that was more of a, a four-part entity. Um, so, you know, that is an example in the past.
If, if I may, I just want to follow up on what I could vent to. So, uh, I, I hear you that, you know, it may be a good revenue generator, but it's been a source of a lot of pollution issues in the east ward. So I don't know if that was a, uh, uh, something we should have been involved in any, because there are a lot of lawsuits and a lot of other things going on around Covanta. So to me, that's a bad example.
Mr. President, I was just using it as, on the financing side, certainly not making any opinion on, on the, on the quality of the, or the, you know.
Understood.
Yeah, regarding that. I, I understood, but I have, Commissioner, Commissioner Gill, you, you have another question, sir?
Thank you, Mr. President. I mean, no, I think that's, you know, again, I, I, I think, I appreciate that answer. It just, and, and however, e- even though there are, I, I guess, other um authorizations for the authority, I mean, we're making clear, in my opinion, that we're, we're doing this for a, for a, for a public space to support a public um institution. So again, I, I can appreciate that there are other um categories that uh, that the um authority um uh is authorized to, to issue uh bonds for. But, but for this particular project, we're, we're issuing them to sup- or what we're, or what we're representing in my mind through this resolution is that we're doing this to finance a public space.
Someone want to answer Commissioner Gill's question?
Uh, this is Bernard Davis. Again, um, the, the uh improvement authority law, I, I think, tends to lump together uh the description of facilities when they describe a public facility. But again, uh, at the risk of repeating myself, uh, I think that uh, uh, one of the categories for the approval of facilities and the financing of facilities by the improvement authority is for uh not-for-profits. And uh the role here of the commissioners is to um review and, and approve what the improvement authority has said. Um, you know, in terms of its ability to go ahead and finance these bonds. As I said, our, our firm are giving opinion that uh these bonds are fully within the purview of the County Improvement Authority's law.
So just, just to follow up on that, Mr. President? So there would be no reason then to, to include, uh, and I, and I'm not sure who, again, this, this question may be uh for Mr. Paul Levesque as well, but then there's no reason to have that point made clear in the resolution itself?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand that, that part.
I mean, listing in the resolution that the authority, that the, they, that the authority that, uh, I'm on paragraph 1, 2, 3, 4 of the resolution, you know, and says, whereas the authority is authorized under this act, they issue revenue bonds for the authority to finance public facilities, including this type. So to me, that, again, says we're determining this, that this is a public facility, even though they have authorization for nonprofits and other things.
If I may, Mr. President, if I'm not mistaken, charter schools are public.
Mr. Jackson?
If I may, Mr. President, I, I believe charter schools are public schools since their um ability to get tax dollars.
So I think the charter schools are public.
Yeah, charter school, excuse me, Bernard Davis, charter schools are recognized as public schools by law. So if I may, looking at the statute, Bernard Davis, again, the term "public facility" as used in the statutes is extremely broad. And it means any lands, structures, et cetera, financed by the authority. So it, it's extremely broad. And, you know, whether it's in the nature of a public facility like a train station, it's any facility financed by the authority, which is what we're doing here. And one of the categories of borrowers are, as I say, are not-for-profits.
And, and again, forgive me, Friends of Team Charter is a not, is a, and I know, and I forgive, I know you've run through it a couple of times, but Friends of Team Charter Schools Incorporated is a?
It is, this Bernard Davis, it is a not-for-profit corporation which has received a 501(c)(3) designation by the Internal Revenue Service.
Got it. And I apologize, I know you've said that a couple of times, but now it's, okay.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Commissioners, any other questions? So I have one, I think is, I can't remember, the gentleman who was just speaking said that things are brought to the board that are recommended by ECIA and that the board is just supposed to approve. Did, did I get that wrong?
Uh.
Isn't that what we just said?
Yeah, they, this, the statute, if I may, and I, I didn't mean to diminish the activity, this Bernard Davis, diminish the activity of the commissioners, but what the statute requests is that once the authority has approved the project and with the pre-approval of the county executive, they're asked to, before we can go ahead with the bond resolution, approve a resolution consenting to what the authority has done.
But that's not what you said a couple of minutes ago. That, that's not. You said that the ECIA approves the project and that the board of commissioners is just supposed to approve.
Well.
So it doesn't matter what you bring to us, that we're just supposed to rubber stamp it, so it doesn't even make sense for us to ask questions if, if that's the way that you view it.
This Bernard Davis, I apologize if that's the impression that you received, it was not my intent.
That, that's what you said.
What I was trying to do is paraphrase what the statute says, and that is to ask that you consent to what the authority has approved. And in addition to the levels of approval that we've sought already, the local finance board and the Department of Community Affairs had drew a view of the project and approved it as well.
I have a question for Ms. DeFilippo, sorry if I messed your name up.
Good, it's beautifully.
Okay. So my question is, the 90% that you get from the state, is that used for renovations or purchase of any buildings?
Um, tip, well, it depends. Tip, we sometimes do use the money for direct renovations and other times to pay rent.
So what you get for people can be used for rent and/or renovations?
And/or, yes, and/or debt service payments if under certain conditions.
Do you know what that percentage might be?
The percent that we spend on?
Rent and renovations and that kind of stuff?
Yes, actually, I'll, I'll kick that one to my colleague, Steve Small, who knows this number slightly better than I do.
Thank you.
Sure, this is, sure, this, this is Steve Small. I just want to make sure I'm understanding the question. Is the question about what the funding we receive from state and local sources is eligible to be used for? Or are you looking, and/or are you looking to understand approximately what, what portion of the funding we receive goes towards, you know, facilities, quote unquote?
Well, answer both, since you posed it.
Okay. Fair enough. Yeah, so the, the funding that we receive, the vast majority of it, and ever, we try and maximize the amount that is going to the types of expenses that most directly impact, you know, students and student outcomes. So, you know, we're trying to spend the vast majority on things like salaries of teachers and other folks who support our kids. And then, but because of the way that the laws and regulations were for charter schools as we discussed, we also need to use part of the funding we receive to, you know, to pay for the space, the, the school space that we use to provide instruction, either tip, almost always through rent and in very rare circumstances, in our case, just one out of all of our schools, which is the North 13th Street property, is this, are we, is the school entity the actual owner of the building? On balance, currently, we spend a little bit less than a thousand dollars per student out of the approximately $16,000 we receive per student per year on rent and debt service.
Thank you very much for that explanation. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Mr. President, this is Commissioner Cooper, I have a question.
Commissioner Cooper, go ahead.
Um, probably Mr. Parlovecchio or Mr. McInerney could answer. Is this the same school corporation that we did funding like this for a couple of years back? Is this similar?
Mr. Cooper, is it similar? I don't think it's the same group, but I do recall we did, we, the board had a consent resolution for a similar bond issuance. But I don't think it was the same group.
Uh, this is Bernard Davis, perhaps I can answer that. Last year, we, we did two bond issues through the improvement authority for the uncommon schools, which in their banner school is the North Star Academy. So last year, we did similar approvals for charter school, but a, a different group.
Similar, and how are those bonds performing? Is the, the school system meeting its obligation, the school, the, the school corporation at that time?
This Bernard Davis, yes, they are.
Mr. Parlovecchio, so the one that we did last year, there was discussion about going to, and thank you, Mr. President, for bringing up that point. It, it was presented initially as if this was, we should just be rubber stamping this, and so a part of me was like, why is this before us then? If you don't need us, why, why are you seeking our approval? So, I, I want to make sure I understand correctly. This is a nonprofit corporation, similar to like the way we did last year, they're issuing bonds, they're responsible for servicing the debt, and if they default, the county residents, they're not on the hook for it. They're standalone, separate corporation.
That's right.
Did I get that right?
The county, right, the county is not providing guarantee, nor is the ECIA, so by extent, taxpayers aren't on the hook for the guarantee.
And, and why do we have to give our authority, like, why do we have to approve this?
So the, the state, the state has a body of law, the county improvement authority law, and as part of that, the county governing body, this board, has to provide the consent to the bond issuance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, I have one other question. So this is, uh, this bond is up to 60 million, correct?
Uh, this is Bernard Davis, that is correct.
So what is the minimum?
I'm sorry, say again?
So the minimum is a dollar from one dollar to 60 million?
Well, 60 million, this Bernard Davis is on the high estimate of what we would need. Not all the contracts are out for bid yet. We will also fund that reserve fund that I alluded to and capitalize interest to pay interest on bonds during the renovation. So it does add up. Right now, the estimate is 41 million will be spent on Sussex Avenue and 6.7 million will be spent on 13th Street. But if we come in with a number that's too low, then we'd have to come back and go through all the approvals again.
Makes sense. Got it. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing that, I have a motion from Vice President Pumares and a second from Commissioner Mercado to take Resolution 15. Madam Secretary, I mean, Madam Clerk, I'm sorry, roll call.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Present, not voting.
Commissioner Johnson, absent, Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Take care.
Bye.
Let's move to Resolutions 16 through 18. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. County Council, Gassion, will handle these items.
Mr. Gassion, you're on mute.
You're on mute. A trouble to me.
You, you may have to go to either Jake Coltrier or, uh, Ja, Mr. Jackson's office.
We, we can, we can, you want to, you want to come down to my office?
Deborah Davis, fourth.
There's still hope, Mr. President, it will be done before midnight.
Yeah.
I think, I think you need to have Carl on these meetings to explain the fifth floor wire.
He's, actually, he's, he's on. He's probably hiding at this point.
They want to consider rewiring that facility.
Mr. Jackson, you want to move to 19 through 21 while we wait?
Certainly, sir. Uh, Mr. Brown, Maurice Brown, will handle these items.
Uh, good evening, Mr. President and Commissioner, my name is Maurice Brown, I'm the director for the Division of Senior Services. On number 19, the Department of Senior Citizen Services, it's approval of 2021 Senior Service Area Plan, and that is number 18. That's the reimbursement, the state actually gives us that money and then we reimburse the county, or the counties' advance that they did for us earlier in the year. And that's in the amount of, I believe, um, I believe it's about, yeah, $4,964 and 261. Uh, number 20 is the Department of Senior Services' approval of amendment to the 2021 Area Matrix. And that is extra money that we receive for the coronavirus response and relief supplemental, and that's in the price of 652,505. $195 will be going, and $195,822 will be going to AGS, the Adult Protective Services, $456,683 will be going to our nutrition or otherwise our home-delivered meals. And number 21 is Resolution of the County of Dallas to enter into an interlocal service agreement with the Township of Livingston for shuttle bus service. This, I believe, started around 2015, where the Township of Livingston has an agreement with the county to pay us for service or transportation.
And are there any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Parlovecchio?
I don't, I don't have any questions.
Mr. McInerney?
I have no questions, Mr. President.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing that, I have a motion from Commissioner Cooper and a second from Commissioner Gill to take 19, Resolution 19 through 21 as one, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson, absent, Commissioner Luciano? Absent. Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolutions, go back to 16 through 18, which are from the Office of County Council. Please read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll try again, County Council, Gassion is here to address these items.
Good evening, I, I apologize for the technical difficulties. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, Courtney Gassion, Essex County Council, I'm here to present Resolution 16 through 18. They are identical in nature, but for the fact that they are three different legal services providers. Resolution 16, 17, and 18 are an extension of the existing contracts for services to the ICE detainees at the Essex County Correctional Facility. Resolution 16 is specific to Rutgers University Law School, 17 is a contract extension for Seton Hall University School of Law, and Resolution 18 is an extension of the contract that's currently in place with regard to legal services in New Jersey. Each of these contracts are in the amount of $75,000. They extend the existing contract, which currently expires on June 30th, 2021, to September 30th, 2021, so that's a three-month extension in the amount of $75,000. This allows those entities to continue the representation of ICE detainees at the Essex County Correctional Facilities during this extended period of time as the county works with ICE in the depopulation of the ICE detainee population at the Essex County Correctional Facility. We have representatives from the three legal service providers on the line with us tonight. We have Lena Kandawala from Rutgers, we have Galerica Teji from Seton Hall, and we have Rakiba Hugh from Legal Services of New Jersey, if you have any questions for the providers. If you have any questions for the providers.
Mr. Polavecchio? Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, thank you, Ms. Gassion. I think my question, if it doesn't go to you, may go collectively to the three providers. First, I think we can thank for having done, uh, really, uh, an excellent job for their clients. Um, you mentioned, Ms. Gassion mentioned the, uh, depopulation of the Essex County Correctional Facility, that will be taking place, where the ICE detainees will be, um, leaving that facility, leaving the county facility, uh, by some point this summer. Um, and, and these contracts that we have will take us through the end of September. So my question is, um, is there a plan or is there feasibility of continuous representation when we take a step back? Assuming that the detainees are moved to another facility outside of Essex County. Will, uh, one or all or any of the three providers continue to provide immigration legal services to those individuals in, um, their next, uh, the next place that they are, uh, they'll be housed?
Through you, Mr. President, Courtney Gassion, Essex County Council. I will defer to any of the three providers to respond to that question.
Rakiba Huck from Legal Services in New Jersey, thank you for the question. Um, and, uh, I can, uh, answer and then some of my colleagues can jump in as well. But, uh, basically, there's two considerations here. One is certainly our professional-
Excuse, I, I didn't catch your name?
So this is Rakiba Huck from Legal Services in New Jersey.
Thank you.
Sure, so certainly, our, um, under our professional and ethical obligations, we, um, certainly would seek to represent clients wherever they might end up. Uh, the only component that's out of our control really is where they end up and what access there might be or not be, um, to be able to speak with our clients confidentially and, uh, you know, as frequently and as we need to adequately prepare them and represent them before the court. So that's just something that we don't know. But our intention is certainly to fulfill our obligations to our clients and continue representing them.
Thank you, I appreciate that answer.
So, I, I'm sorry, Mr. McInerney?
No, I don't have any questions, Mr. President.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Gill?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I mean, first off, um, you know, this process, I, I want to, um, thank our providers, um, uh, as, as you know, Mr. President, this was, um, something early on in, in our tenure and leadership together that we approached the administration, uh, very early on to, to help fund. And, uh, we're pleased to see that event, eventually, we were able to convince the administration to fund this at, um, a level, uh, that was, um, greater than any other county that I'm aware of, uh, that had immigration detainees. Um, and, um, I believe, close if not to or greater than, uh, what we were seeing from a statewide perspective. Um, I, I think that our providers have done a, an excellent job, um, in providing, uh, as close to universal as representation, which was at least always my goal, in wanting to make sure that we have this program available, uh, to our immigration detainees. Um, and, um, uh, want to make sure that we continue to get this balance as we, um, uh, wind down, uh, the, or depopulate, uh, the detainees in the facility. Um, so, um, understanding that these amounts, um, will hopefully be coming down, uh, because we will no longer need, at least in Essex County, um, these services for our immigration, um, detainees, uh, and also hope that, uh, this is a sign, um, at least, uh, by the administration, uh, that we have no plans, uh, to enter, uh, into any one of these contracts again, uh, nor ever, uh, house any ICE detainees, uh, in any of our correctional facilities. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Gill. I do, and Commissioner Mercado, you have a question?
Yes, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Uh, first, I'd like to, um, one, thank, um, each of the providers, uh, for the services that they've been providing the detainees. And, um, uh, uh, I want to also thank, uh, Commissioner Gill for his leadership, um, and, and moving this, uh, universal representation, um, to where it's at. Uh, it was very important for us, and we all felt, um, that that was a, a real need, and we were able to deliver, uh, I am total support of the extension of this contract, um, to allow for the, uh, entities to continue to represent them, and as they depopulate, to be able to transition them to where they go. Um, I also want to, uh, thank the administration for taking, um, the initiative to, to, to move this, to ask for this extension, and I wholeheartedly support this extension. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Commissioners Sebel?
I attended by phone most of the task force meetings. And these three groups were represented at these meetings, and they explained fully exactly what they were doing. Also, the detention center explained, or explained fully also, what it was doing to make the situation better for those who are being housed as ICE detainees. So I want to thank the groups for doing so much work to help the ICE detainees. They really succeeded in what they did. And I want to personally thank them for what I listened to and heard for this entire time. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners Sebel. Commissioner VP, Palmares?
Thank you, sir. I, uh, also want to, um, uh, sha- share my, uh, thoughts with the, uh, providers that have worked with us, that have done an excellent job since day one. I think Mr. Polavecchio asked a couple of very important questions, and you addressed them earlier. Um, but I want to make sure that we hear from the other two providers as well, to give them an opportunity to share and, and perhaps respond to Mr. Polavecchio's questions in terms of how they will be able to work with the balance of this contract as we wind down the contracts. Um, you know, the, the population at our facility. So if we could hear perhaps from the other two, that would be great.
Thank you, VP.
Hi, this is, um, Anju Gupta from Rutgers. Um, I, I don't believe that Courtney, um, mentioned my name, but I just wanted to say that I'm here as well. Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, we can.
Okay. Um, yeah, so, uh, uh, I'm the Director of the Clinic at Rutgers. Um, and, uh, I agree with everything that Rakiba said. Um, we, you know, even if, um, folks are moved out of, uh, the facility, we still have a professional obligation to continue representation. Um, so, you know, we certainly need, um, the continued funding to be able to carry out, um, those cases. Um, and, you know, as we know, people are being sent out of state, um, and, you know, there's, or, or, you know, we don't even know. Um, and so, um, certainly, there's a lot of work to be done to, um, represent them or find, uh, local counsel or co-counsel, um, in these various places, um, if we're not able to represent them remotely. So, um, so yeah, there's, there's certainly a lot of, uh, work to be done moving forward.
Thank you, I, I appreciate that. And, and our last provider, just want to, who's our representative for the last provider?
Yes, good evening. This is Lekariya Tajee, Managing Attorney at Seton Hall Law for the Detained Project. Uh, thank you so much for hearing us today. Um, I am just going to echo what, uh, my other two colleagues men- mentioned. We certainly have plenty of work to do, and we definitely have ongoing commitment to our clients. Um, we have ethical responsibilities to our clients, and the fact that the contract is winding down does not mean that we have less work to do. Um, our, uh, work continues in the litigation front, and, uh, we now represent the Essex detainees. We continue representation, um, at the Board of Immigration Appeals level, as well as before the Third Circuit. Um, and to the extent that we have, um, uh, we have, uh, the ability to represent them when they are transferred out of state, we continue to do so. Whether jurisdiction has been, uh, moved to a different state or not, we, if we do have the capacity. And again, this is why we need this ongoing support, so we can continue to do the work, whether our clients are physically here or not. Um, thank you very much again for, um, your support today and for hearing us out.
No, thank you. Thank you for that answer. So that opens up, uh, Commissioner Mercado, you have another question?
Yes, if I, if I may, Mr. President. I just, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, um, we have a, uh, ICE Subcommittee meeting next week, and, um, I hope and anticipate that we can have a further conversation about what that, uh, plan is and in terms of how that representation rolls out when you depopulate. Um, and hopefully, we can get some, some numbers and some datas in terms of, you know, how many clients, um, have you served? How many clients do you presently have? And what, uh, what work, um, as you mentioned, uh, as the representative mentioned, there's a lot of work to do as they, um, wind down. So we'd like to hear a little bit more about that, um, next week during our committee meeting. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mercado. So you're saying that the three providers will be, uh, a part of the Subcommittee meeting next week? Is my understanding correct?
Um, yes, we've asked the administration to have the, uh, Rutgers, uh, Seton Hall Law and, um, Legal Services of New Jersey, um, participate in the committee meeting next week.
Outstanding. So I just have, uh, yeah, I, I too want to thank each and every one of the providers for all that you do and your committed, uh, and continued support of these, uh, detainees. And so, so my question really is, when they, well, once we depopulate and they go to other places, then you guys are still going to be representing them. So how can we continue to be helpful in that process? You have a three-month extension. Is that satisfactory? Don't all speak at once.
This is Rakiba from Legal Services. Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Anju, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Rakiba, fine.
Oh, thank you. So this is Rakiba from Legal Services, and, um, you know, it's a great question. I think there are, um, a lot of unknowns for us, because if I can just get into a little bit more detail, we have the current group of people and clients who are still at Essex County during this depopulation period, who, as, as I think all of us have mentioned, we, um, you know, if, if we can't get them released or transferred in state, might end up in places where we don't know yet if it's going to be feasible for us to, um, to actually represent them. I mean, I, the intent, the desire and the, the, the goal is there, but there are some facilities privately run, for example, all over the country, where people don't answer, we don't have the transparency communication that we did, for example, with the county here. And we're not sure that we could even speak to our clients there. We're not sure if we're going to be depriving them of certain rights by appearing remotely, um, here or trying to change venue back to Elizabeth when they might be able to appear in person from where they are. So there's just a lot of unknowns. Um, I, it, it, I think we would appreciate an ongoing communicating conversation with the county of additional funding, should there be a concrete way we can continue to help people. The other thing I think I wanted to raise that Anju, uh, mentioned as well, but to, to crystallize it further, is that the depopulation of Essex County Correctional Facility doesn't mean an end to NJ ICE detention. We already know concretely that there are New Jersey ICE, New Jersey residents, rather, um, you know, many from Essex County and from other counties who are still being detained. And now with nowhere to be held here, they are being immediately transferred to York, to Buffalo, to Louisiana, and other far-flung places across the country. So there's that consideration as well, that, um, even though there might not be an Essex County Correctional Detention link, there are still Essex County residents, um, and residents of New Jersey who are going to be detained by ICE elsewhere. And certainly, we are looking into ways, same things, you know, there are a lot of unknowns, but we're looking into ways that we can hopefully assist, represent.
Thank you so much. So if you could do this for us, I think I could speak for the board on this. If you, if there's a way that you could follow these folks and the ones that you can still, um, participate in their, uh, on their legal behalf, and you could come up with a number of how many those folks you can still stay involved in, could be very helpful in terms of, uh, expanding, um, the, the revenue that you guys need, uh, because the number is going to be far less in terms of how many people you're actually going to be able to work on. But if there's a way that you could get that number of folks that you could still stay involved in and you can still, um, have an impact on, that, that would be helpful for, for this board.
Um, this is Anju Gupta from Rutgers. Again, um, I, I think that issue really depends on, like, where the county wants to, um, focus its efforts, right? So, um, if the issue, you know, if, if we are to, to continue to only focus on ECCS detainees, then, you know, that is a limited population that will continue, obviously, to decrease, right? Um, although there may be, you know, some kind of long-term cases, um, that, that we, you know, that where we're still representing folks for a while. Um, but it, you know, if there is a desire to help the New Jersey or the Essex County residents and their families who are impacted by those residents being sent elsewhere, then I think that is, you know, a different issue, um, and one that we would be happy to explore. Um, you know, so far, it's been really hard to get information about where people are, where, where they're being sent, and how, and numbers, and, you know, all of that. Um, but, you know, we certainly think that that's a, a very big problem right now as well.
So if you could, you guys could look at it from both perspectives, that would be helpful. The New Jersey residents who, and their families who are being impacted, and those folks that, um, you can still, um, have an effect on. And then we have to figure out how, how we do it.
Sure.
Thank you so much.
And this is Rakiba from Legal Services. I think I got cut off at some point, but it sounds like Anju carried on perfectly, so sorry about that.
No problem, thank you. All right. Mr. Polavecchio?
No, no, uh, that was great information. I don't have any other questions.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing that, I have a motion from Vice President Palmares and a second Commissioner Sebel to take Sixteen through Eighteen. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper? Absent, Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson, absent, Commissioner Luciano, absent, Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebel?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now let's move to Resolutions Twenty-two through Twenty-six and Forty and Forty-One, which are from the Department of Parks. We will read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Zaitz, who will handle these items?
Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks. Number Twenty-two is a support resolution for Green Acres applications for various nonprofits that are applying, uh, for county park projects. Specifically, these are the Brooklyn Park Alliance for Improving the Southern Division of Brentford Park, Spark for Improvements Independent Park, Zoological Society for the Asian Exhibit at Turtleback Zoo, the Essex County Park Foundation, also for the ex- Asian Exhibit at the Turtleback Zoo, the South Mountain Conservancy for Improvements to South Mountain Reservation, and the Brookdale Park Alliance for Improvements Brookdale Park. This is, uh, simply just a resolution in support of those entities applying for Green Acres Green. Number Twenty-three is a contract award, or contract extension to Armar- Number twenty-three is a contract award or contract extension to Aramark Sports to provide food and boat concessions over at Verona Park. The amount of revenue coming to the county is seventy-four thousand over the two years, and then there's an additional four percent should Aramark reach over the amount of one hundred forty thousand, one dollars, in each of those years. Number twenty-four is approval for reprogramming of a portion of the Historical Commission Local History Grants Fund. If this board can recall, back on February tenth of this year, as per the Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash oh-oh-one-two-six, the Oakside Bloomfield Cultural Center was awarded a twenty-seven-hundred-dollar operating support grant. Since that time, the Oakdale property has been taken over by the County of Bloomfield. Therefore, the Oakside Bloomfield Cultural Center can no longer accept the grant. So this is a reprogramming of that grant amount now to Bloomfield, but it would still serve the Oakside Bloomfield Cultural Center. Number twenty-five is a contract award to T K E Elevator Corporation to provide elevator maintenance for the Turtleback Zoo parking garage. Specifically, this is the parking garage furthest from Northfield Avenue. It's the one near the train, and it's an amount not to exceed ten thousand eighty dollars for a twelve-month agreement. Number twenty-six is a contract award to Railroad, I'm sorry, to Railroad Construction Company of South Jersey for the railroad improvements over at the zoo. Specifically, this is going to enable the county to run two trains simultaneously. This is a signal and crossing upgrades over at the zoo. It'll improve visitor's safety, as required by the D C A Amusement Division. As I said, it'll allow for two trains to run currently. The signal's all signal for one train to stop and then, obviously, the other train to move forward and whatnot. And I believe we have a representative from the country on the line, from the company, sorry.
Yes, Chris Davilicio, Vice President of Railroad Construction Company of South Jersey. We're a South Jersey-based company out of Paulsboro, New Jersey, a fourth-generation railroad contractor, a hundred percent unionized. We have roughly fifty to eighty employees, depending on the time of year. We're really excited to be working for the zoo and getting some guys back to work. We're going to be working closely with a commonly-owned company, J G D Electric, who perform all the signal and electrical work, who is also signatory of the I B W Union. So we'll be putting some good, good union working jobs back out there working. Thank you.
Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks. Continuing on, number forty is authorization from the Essex County Recreation Open Space Trust Fund to fund perimeter fence improvements over at Weekwake Park. This is actually the funding source, the number twenty-seven. Specifically, the project will include sparring plate, wrought iron fence, system, scrubbing, insulation, and two hundred feet of new six-foot-high black cement fence with a metal railing for more stability, including topsoiling, seating, roofing, etc. This is for the Route twenty-two side of the park. Number forty-one is a contract award to Creed to the Street with an amount of five hundred dollars, which is revenue, and is to provide mobile ice cream slash food truck over at Weekwake Park. This is the first time I can remember that we've actually had a vendor over with a food truck in Weekwake. Every year, we put out for this service, and unfortunately, every year, we can't seem to find a provider, but this year, we're happy to share that we finally found someone. So we're looking forward to them starting. Happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Zaitz. Mr. Paulivekio.
Mr. President, I don't have any questions, always.
Mr. McInerney. On Resolution number twenty-six, the two received on that contract, but it obviously was Railroad Construction Company of South Orange, South Jersey, Inc. The other company, I don't have the firm I remember looking at, it was, I think, Railroad Construction Company, Inc. Very similar names. Were those companies related? Are they of common ownership or are they unrelated?
Unrelated companies. There was back in the day common ownership, but they're completely separate today.
Excuse me, excuse me, please put your name on the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chris Davilicio, Railroad Construction Company of South Jersey.
Could you say that again, please?
They were all started back in the day as one in nineteen twenty-six. We opened as a field office, and we split off of them about ten years ago. And they're a completely separate company, not commonly owned. My uncle actually runs that company, and I run this company.
But there's no common ownership? There's no common facility that they work out of?
None, no, not at all.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'm going to, I'm going to ask one more question. So neither one would be of what the other one was bidding, correct?
No, no, they're actually a competitor.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Mr. President.
Commissioner Sebo.
On June seventh, the Open Space Trust Fund had a meeting, and we approved the increase in the fencing improvements at Weekwake Park. We had a full discussion about it, and I understand this is going to be on the Route twenty-two side. And there have been a lot of complaints about the fencing at Weekwake Park. So I'm hopeful that after this is taken care of, it will help in terms of the complaints about fencing in the park. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
If you hear the thunderstorm, it's kind of thunderstorm over me right now.
Oh. Mr. President, I have one other question. Permission, I mean, Mr. McInerney. On Resolution forty-one, are there these contract awards for this ice cream vendor? Are there other proposals or RPs going out for other parks within the county?
Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks, through you, Mr. President. We typically put out one bid, which would contain three parks. They are Branch Brook, Brookdale, and Weekwake. We put that bid out. We did not receive any proposals for Brookdale or Branch Brook. We only received a proposal for Weekwake. We have re-advertised for Brookdale and Branch Brook, and hopefully, this time, we will get a vendor, and then we will happily come back to the board requesting approval for that at a later date.
Okay, one other, do any of these locations include South Mountain Reservation by the zoo or by the boathouse, you know, where we have the boats to rest for?
Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks, no, it's specifically those three parks I mentioned. Something, something over at South Mountain, you know, they'd be able to get items to eat over in either the arena, the boathouse itself, or the zoo.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McInerney. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Mr. President, just one quick one. The vendor for the ice cream, is that also referred to as a pedro's license, or is that something different? Now, does this have a technical difference between the two?
Joshua Zaitz, through you, Mr. President. Unfortunately, I'm not qualified to answer that either. All I know is that whatever requirements purchasing required, this vendor certainly met them.
Mr. Vice President, I think I can add that.
Thank you.
No, this is a little different. This is like a licensee that they're basically, they're a contractor, it's a revenue-producing contract, but it's not just a pedro's license.
What's the difference? What's the difference?
It's usually, they don't, it's not got by contract. They come in for some limited period. This is different, this is just a different setup. It's done by, it's done by, not bid, but by.
To this process, okay.
There's something to that process.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? I have one. I know Mr. Coltria has asked me for several years to help him find an ice cream vendor in, for Weekwake Park, and I have been unsuccessful, not because I didn't try and reach out to folks, but I'm happy to see that they finally got one, where I can go and buy an ice cream off the truck after I run around the park. Thank you.
Mr. President, I, Julius, Vice President. Mr. President, I hope Vice President Palmaras can do the same in Brookdale.
Yeah.
I'll see what I can do. Maybe I get your taco truck there.
There you go, something different.
Mr. President, we got to work on finding something for Branch Brook, definitely.
Absolutely. I agree. Okay, Commissioners, I have a motion from Commissioner Sebo and a second from Commissioner Graham to take Resolutions twenty-two through twenty-six and forty and forty-one as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Ricardo.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano, absent. Commissioner Johnson, absent. Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Absent. Oh, Commissioner Cooper is here. That's a yes.
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner, Vice President Palmaras.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolutions twenty-seven through thirty-four from the Department of Public Works. We will read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Antonio will address these items.
Good evening, Commissioners. David Antonio, Department of Public Works. Item number twenty-seven is a contract award to Land Tech Group, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder to provide the Weekwake Park fencing improvements. This will be a sixty-day contract, an amount not to exceed two hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. The scope of work includes the installation of approximately fifteen hundred linear feet of fencing, removal of old fence, and restoration of any disturbed areas. Item number twenty-eight is approval to submit a grant application and execute a grant contract with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for undertaking the Lakeside Avenue Culvert Project, which is a culvert over the Wickman Road in the township of West Orange. This is related to budget insertion found under item number eleven, and will allow the county to be reimbursed for up to five hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars. Item number twenty-nine, again, is another approval to submit a grant application and execute a grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for undertaking improvements to four minor culverts. These are the Marion Avenue Culvert over the West Branch of the Rowway River in Milburn, the Freeman Street over Fullerton's Brook in Roseland, the Mitchell Street over the East Branch of the Rowway in Orange, and the Locust Street over Lloyd Brook in Bloomfield. Again, this item is related to the budget insertion under nine and twelve. It will allow the county of FASX to be reimbursed for cost in an amount of one million, six hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and three dollars. Item number thirty is a contract award to Sparwick Construction for undertaking miscellaneous improvements to bridges and culverts. Sparwick was the lowest of seven bidders. This will be a seven hundred and thirty-day agreement, an amount not to exceed four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars. It will be an open-ended contract, and Sparwick is a certified small business, S V E. We have already identified certain bridges that will have priority repairs done to them. We have identified the Little Falls Road Bridge over Peckman River in Sierra Grove, the Eisenhower Bridge over Willow Brook in Livingston, South Orange Avenue over the East Branch of the Rowway in South Orange, Washington over the Second River in Orange, Besake Avenue over the Besake River in Milburn, and New Dutch Lane over the Pavel Brook in Fairfield. Item number thirty-one is the award of professional services to provide engineering and inspection services for the two thousand and twenty-one roadway program to K S Engineers. This is a, this contract will not exceed two hundred and ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. It will be for twelve months. It will be funded with capital funds, and the K S Engineers was the highest scoring of the nine respondents. Item number thirty-two is the actual construction of said roadway improvement under the two thousand and twenty-one roadway resurfacing project. There were two bids received, the lowest being Smith-Sandy, will not exceed nine million, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars. This will be a one hundred and eighty-day contract, and funding will be capital and grant. Some, there are about fourteen roadway sections included, Grove Street in Irvington, Park Avenue in Orange, Eisenhower in Roseland and Livingston, Springfield Avenue in Newark, Cranston Avenue in Nutley and Belville, Bay Avenue in Bloomfield, Glenridge and Montclair, Hoover Avenue in Bloomfield, White Oak Ridge in Milburn, Essex Street in Milburn, Eisenhower Parkway in Roseland and Livingston, Belville Avenue in Bloomfield, Main Street in West Orange, High Street in Nutley, and Clinton Avenue in Irvington. Mr. Mike Bobow of Smith-Sandy would like to take a minute to introduce himself and his company. Michael?
Good evening. My name is Mike Bobow. I'm representing Smith-Sandy asphalt construction. I am sitting here for Mr. Joseph Smith, who was an equal to attend to this meeting in the due of previous commitment. Smith-Sandy is celebrating their seventy-fifth anniversary. The company was founded by Mr. Smith's father back in nineteen forty-six, and since then, we have grown into a multi-million dollar conglomerate. Our clientele base is both the private sector and the public sector. We have contracts with municipalities, with the state of New Jersey, and several of the counties in northern New Jersey, including several we have done for in Essex County. We are a union company. Our laborers are the four seventy-two, our operators are with eight twenty-five, our drivers are the teams with five sixty. Mr. Smith employs approximately eighty employees, and of which about eighteen percent, fourteen, are Essex County residents. And like I said in prior, we have done several projects for Essex County in the past and look forward to doing more work for you in the future. Thank you very much.
No, thank you. I appreciate that. Like those numbers.
David Antonio, Department of Public Works. Item number thirty-three is a contract award to Direct Waste Services to provide for the collection and disposal of garbage and rubbish at various county locations. Direct Waste was the sole bidder for this two-year contract in an amount not to exceed two million, one hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. This will furnish county-wide removal and replacement of various garbage containers of various sizes at various locations if needed. Item number thirty-four is a contract with Cone, Inc., to provide specialized repair and specialized parts and software for Cone elevators, which are located at three twenty, three twenty-one University Avenue. This will be a two-year agreement in an amount not to exceed eighty thousand dollars. This will allow us to furnish and service appropriately the five elevators that currently exist in the DFAB buildings at three twenty and three twenty-one University Avenue. And Cone Elevator, Inc., is the only, is the only company that's allowed to repair and maintain any software or equipment associated with said Cone elevators. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Antonio. Mr. Paulivekio.
I don't have any questions. Very informative.
Mr. McInerney. Same here, no questions, very informative. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. President, if I may? Thank you. I want to commend Mr. Antonio for always being prepared and having a good list. He was too fast for me to catch the list of roads and the towns that he may mention in number thirty-two. If, at another time, through you, Mr. Jackson, can you provide that with me? I know there were several in my area that I'd like to take a close look at.
Absolutely, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you. Well done, Mr. Antonio. Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion- Hearing that, I have a motion from Commissioner Graham and a second from Commissioner Sebo to take 27 through 34. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson absent, Commissioner Luciano absent, Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolution 35 through 37, which are from the Department of Corrections, and we will read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, sir. Director Ortiz will address these items.
Yes, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Okay, great. Um, item number one, give me one second here. I was great for you guys, and all of a sudden, I'm not giving one second. It is, uh, for the purchase of a machine that, that, that actually, um, detects on, on, on paper, letterhead, or, um, any kind of mail, um, narcotics, obviously, is, is briefly. Um, we have, um, a new phenomenon occurring in the drug world where people are spraying various CD, types of CDSs that, um, they're not smoking them or, or snorting them, as has been in the past. And now we need this particular equipment to, because people are technically soaking the document in the, in, at certain portions of it, and soaking the CDS on it, and they know the top lamp is where it's at. They either ingest it, um, you know, uh, technically, they, they chew on it and they get high that way. This machine, um, is the lowest responsible bidder that, uh, has and meets our qualifications to help us out with this, um, situation that we have. The next item is for the purchases of weapons.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Um, can he, um, uh, he, the item he just talked about was Resolution 35? If he could, instead of saying one or two, if he could reference the actual resolution, that would be helpful.
No, that, not a problem. Uh, I just got caught a little short here, and I'm looking at item number 35. Hang on one second. I'm looking at it right now. Give me one quick second. I apologize. Item 35, here we go. Okay, Department of Corrections contract award to Chimage Corporation, the sole responsible, uh, uh, responsive responsible bidder to furnish and deliver a mail scanner, chemical detection, uh, system. The amount not to exceed $556,050, uh, and fifty, fifty, whatever. Bottom line is that we need this machine in order to maintain the safety and security of our institution I explained earlier. Um, right now, we have to keep up with the technologies necessary to abate this ongoing issue. Um, the next item is item 36, Department of Corrections contract award to Atlantic Tactical to provide Winchester ammunition under state contract. It's listed right there. The amount not to exceed $24,969. Obviously, um, this, um, these items are ammunition needed for the qualifications of our officers with their county weapons and, uh, to maintain their county weapons as they carry they are law enforcement officers and authorized to carry. Um, item 37, Department of Corrections contract award to Whitmer Public Safety LLC to provide Colt brand semi-automatic 9mm guns, less, uh, less minus the, the tradeings, okay, under, um, the state contract. It's listed as the fleet number and the amount not to exceed $35,000. This to replace weapons that have become, uh, unusable or need to be replaced, um, for our officers as law enforcement officers to maintain the security and safety as necessary. I'm happy to take any question regarding any three items.
Mr. Paul Vecchio?
I don't have any questions, Mr. President.
Mr. McInerney?
Does the, uh, with, with regard to Resolution number 35, does that come with any, with training? Does it come with, uh, uh, you know, maintenance contracts, or, or is, is it the purchase of?
No, that's absolutely correct. There is training. There is a maintenance, uh, um, uh, portion to it. And as a matter of fact, um, we're going to get a loaner machine as soon as this is approved. Uh, we're going to get a loaner machine until we get the actual machine. It's an identical one. But this is well thought out that we're going to implement this system with a loaner machine. Ultimately, we'll get the final one. And training is required, and, um, maintenance is, uh, essential, and we, and will be provided.
Right. Um, and this also has scanners. Um, is this something you put the mail through, or do you scan with something you hold?
Uh, right now, we don't have this ability. This is a new format that drug folks are using to, 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 or get drugs into correctional facilities nationwide. And, um, the, the scanners that we have now is just like an X-ray machine. It's not X-ray, but it's, it's just to look for contraband, like a hard, um, item or a knife or whatever. This is to, um, identify substance, liquid substance that are soaked in, in, in the letterhead, and then they send it under the guise of legal mail or regular mail. And we can then now see, because we're having these manifestations correctionally throughout the country, that now they're resorted, they're getting very smart, and we have to keep up with their minds.
Right. Well, and this was the only, only person, only company that bid on it, correct?
Um, this is the one that responded. I can't, I can get you that information, but I'm not, uh, uh, I'm not sure of that, sir.
No, I mean, I mean.
We didn't talk to various vendors.
Right, but this was the only one that you received a bid from?
Mr. Ma, uh, Mr. President, Julius Coltry, purchasing agent. Yes, Mr. McInerney, they were the only responders.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. McInerney, let me also mention something on the back page where, uh, Director Ortiz says in the, not to exceed the amount of $556,000, they also have the ability to buy two other machines if they need it in the near future.
That included in the 556, the two other machines? Okay, because I was looking at other counties that bought them for about $100,000, so I wasn't going to get on here and say this, but it was something I was going to follow up with. Yeah, they, they, that makes a lot more sense to me.
That's what I figured you were going to ask your question.
That's, wh- what I was looking up on the internet was much less than 556,000. Thank you. That, that, that clears that up.
Commissioners, questions or comments? On, uh, 835 through 37. Hearing that, I have a, I have a question. So, Director Ortiz, so do you know if this is an issue at the county jail at this time?
Absolutely. We're getting manifestations of people, you know, having drug issues. We're searching, we find the regular, normal marijuana, cocaine type things that are, but we're also getting information. We have an intelligence unit that is telling us we are catching people right now with people with that type of drugs, and it's proven out that it is coming in through the mail under the guise of family mail, legal mail, um, other types of stuff that we have to have this type of machine to find it. Some cases, we can identify that there's a spot, this kind of soap and whatever have you. But this will definitely help us out so we can catch 100% of it, not the, uh, little bit of amount that we have.
Thank you very much. Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Mercado, and a second from VP Palmaras to take 35 through 37. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano absent, Commissioner Johnson absent, Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras?
Yes.
Commissioner, uh, President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolution 38, which is from the office of the sheriff, and we will read it into the record at a later, uh, Mr. Jackson?
Sir, uh, Deputy County Administrator Coltry will handle items 38 and, uh, uh, also 39 when that comes.
Mr. President, Julius Coltry, uh, purchasing agent, this is the office of the sheriff, contract. A state contract award to Atlantic Tactical to provide Colt brand patrol rifles and GEM 3, M3 automatic, uh, ammunition under the state contract, amount not to exceed $23,788. Uh, they're purchasing Colt 6933 EPR patrol rifles. Each one will cost $1,166.40, and they're 40 mag, uh, rounds. Then there's in compliance with the Board of Commissioners ordinance 2015, and this is operating, out of operating funds. Uh, Resolution 39 is from the off, office of the prosecutor, but any county agency may use this, and this is to award elite transcript, to provide transcription services for all using Essex County agencies. Uh, 12-month contract not to exceed $220,000. Uh, this was a non-fair and open contract, printing of legal brief, records and appendices for legal proceedings. You're muted, Mr. President.
Thank you. Well, we're going to take 38 first. Mr. Paul Vecchio?
I don't have any questions on that yet.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions.
Commissioners? I have a motion from Vice President Palmaras and a second from Commissioner Sebo. Uh, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson absent, Commissioner Luciano absent, Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please be reminded, we will conduct a public comment session for non-agenda items at the end of the meeting or any other calling. Clerk, can you give them the call-in information, please?
Uh, yes, Mr. President. If you're calling in, the number is 855-756-7520. That's 855-756-7520. Use the password 73940. Pound. After entering the password, listen to the prompt, press zero to be placed in the queue to speak during the meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This, uh, will go on to Resolution 39, which has already been explained by Mr. Coltry. Mr. Paul Vecchio, any questions?
No, no questions.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing that, I have a motion from Commissioner Cooper and a second from Commissioner Gill to, for Resolution 39. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano absent, Commissioner Johnson absent, Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolution 42, which will, which is from the Board of Taxation. We will read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Uh, Mr. President, thank you. This is a contract award to BRT Technologies to provide cloud-based data processing system. Uh, it's a 12-month agreement, uh, with the, with the Essex County Board of Taxation. Um, this contract will allow the board to, uh, to use the greatest, um, uh, software capabilities, uh, one that they need to do the job, but also as required by the state of New Jersey. Uh, among the things that it will be able to do is, uh, hence the model, uh, BRT Model 4, which is property maintenance system, uh, computer-assisted mass appeal software, electronic version of the appraisal man, manual that's required. Um, it'll provide all the abstracts of ratables electronically for the board. Um, and one of the, I think, one of the more exciting things is going to allow for the Board of Taxation and the Register of Dees and mortgages for their systems to talk to one another, uh, to, to integrate data. Uh, it will also provide a global data collection system for the office, um, and also a sales comparison appraisal model. So it'll be able to look at, uh, commu, uh, properties across the county and compare sales. Uh, so it's an exciting, uh, development for the Board of Taxation, uh, going forward. And again, it's a one-year, uh, contract.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Paul Vecchio, any questions?
No, no questions.
Mr. McInerney, any questions?
No questions, Mr. President.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing that, I have a motion from Commissioner Graham and a second from Commissioner Cooper for Resolution 42. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson absent, Commissioner Luciano absent, Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolution 43, which is from the Office of Purchasing, which will be read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Do, uh, Mr. Coltry?
Uh, Julius Coltry, purchasing agent. Uh, this is kind of a strange request because we're asking for a 24-month contract extension for the existing cafeteria. However, we have now gone out and had a vendor for the new cafeteria, which I'll be opening shortly. This is just, uh, legalese in the respect that we have to have an extension until we do open up the new, uh, cafeteria. Uh, both vendors are the same vendor, so in this particular case, uh, they're willing to extend this contract until we're ready to open up the new cafeteria and do Martin Luther King justice, Phil.
Thank you, Mr. Coltry. Mr. Paul Vecchio?
Well, once Mr. Coltry insulted my profession with his legalese comment, I had to go. So it's a 24-month contract extension, and clearly, the intent is not to carry on for 24 months at that location, so. And I think we talked about this, um, at, uh, leadership meeting. There is the 30-day, uh, kick-out clause, for lack of a better word, in this contract, that once we wind down, we'll be able to, uh, cancel this contract and continue with the new facilities. Is that right, Mr. Coltry?
True, you, Mr. President, uh, Julius Coltry, purchasing agent, um, you're 100% correct, and I made sure, excuse me, that, uh, that 30-day clause was in the extension contract.
Thank you. Mr. McInerney?
Mr. President, what Mr. Paul Vecchio says is correct. We had discussed this, the 30-day clause. It's fine.
Very good. Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing that, I have a motion from Commissioner Gill and a second from Commissioner Mercado to take Resolution 43. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano absent, Commissioner Johnson absent, Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras? Commissioner Vice President Pumares.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, next we have Resolutions Forty-Four through Fifty-Eight. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Uh, Mister President.
Commissioner Sebo.
Number Fifty-Five, I would like to be included on that resolution. Also.
Yes.
Also, number Fifty-Eight is in memoriam for Anita McKean, and I believe that is John McKean's mother. I would very much like to be included on that. I don't know if that resolution has been delivered yet. Yes, no?
Has it?
I, I, I don't know. I don't have any word for it.
It may be too late, but if it has not been delivered, I would like to be included and perhaps it could be by acclamation. It's Assemblyman John McKean's mother.
Madam Clerk, the email that I got said that it was going to be done by acclamation.
Mine says it has your name only.
Oh, I know. When I, but when I sent it in, the response from the office was, was, was to do it by, you know, was that they were gonna do an acclamation, uh.
My agenda, my agenda just says your name.
Ma- ma- okay, Ma- Madam Clerk.
I will, I will, uh, follow up with that tomorrow and, um, um, communicate to the Board.
Has it gone out?
I'll hold on and let me check.
Uh, Commissioner Gill said it was by acclamation. My agenda just says.
I, I read that as well, uh, in an email or somewhere.
I, I recall that, but, but I will confirm that tomorrow.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? And, uh, Commissioner Gill, please, uh, I'd like to add my name to Fifty-Five as well.
Hundred percent.
Thank you. And Mister President, um, if I can be added on Fifty-Five as well, or if not by acclamation, if my fellow colleagues agree.
This is Resolution Fifty-Five, guys. This is a support resolution for, uh. The guy saying yes.
Mister President, would you like this to be by acclamation?
A- absolutely, if that's the will of the Board.
That's how it should be.
Yes.
Okay. Via acclamation. Makes sense to me. All right. So any other questions or comments? Hearing now. I have a motion from Vice President Pumares and a second from Commissioner Sebo to take Forty-Four through Fifty-Eight as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson, absent. Commissioner Luciano, absent. Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Report of Board. Commissioners, any reports? Do we have any legislative reports? Any written communications? Any unfinished business? Any new business? In that case, Madam Clerk, let's move to public, uh, session for non-agenda items. However, since we are meeting remotely, the public had an opportunity to submit questions and comments for considerations and they also have the opportunity to call in.
It was done? Okay. Um, I just want to, um, if, let you know before we move on, Mister President, um, it has been confirmed, the McKean, um, uh, resolution was done by acclamation.
Thank you very much.
And it, it just wasn't changed on the agenda, but it's on, but it's on, but it's on the actual resolution. I had that confirmed.
But I thought I had read it. I thought I read it.
Yeah, and, um, and I remember, um, Commissioner Gill had requested that we do it by acclamation. Okay, um, now we're moving to, uh, public comment. Uh, Mister President. Okay, and, um, uh, again, little housekeeping instructions. You'll be acknowledged to speak in order that your call was received. Emails received for public comment will be read after the calls are completed. At this time, our Public Information Officer will announce the callers so they can state their comments or questions and be reminded to have three minutes to speak. Please do not have your laptop or any electronic devices on while calling in. And at this time, we're accepting only calls pertaining to non-agenda items. Chalo Malumba, our Public Information Officer, please begin our public comment session now.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chalo Malumba, Public Information Officer for the Board of Commissioners. We have one speaker. We have Mister Douglas Freeman. Mister Freeman, please state your name to the record. You have three minutes to speak. You may begin.
Uh, Douglas Freeman.
You may begin. Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, good evening, uh, Chosen Commissioners. I'm here to talk about the election process that took place yesterday. Uh, no, I do not know if you are aware, but the machines in several of our locations, uh, in total of thirty-three, were late to be, uh, delivered to the locations. Um, some of the machines didn't arrive till nine o'clock. Um, that is unacceptable. Um, looking at the law NJSA nineteen dash, uh, or section fifty-two dash one, the machines were supposed to be there at five fifteen AM. Um, this is unacceptable. We asking for an investigation as to why these machines were so, uh, untimely delivered, uh, which has disrupted our community and, uh, we do not have faith in the voting process as of right now in Essex County, uh, being that we were not able to really, uh, actually vote the way that we usually will vote. Some people vote at six o'clock in the morning. Some people vote at seven o'clock in the morning. Uh, we definitely want this to be investigated. Um, this has been an issue for quite some time about the voting process. Uh, we do appreciate the new machine, um, that you was able to, uh, offer us with the paper ballot, but then there's, uh, uh, issue where the privacy is, is not there. Uh, you have workers actually taking the forms. They see who you're voting for. Um, there's no, uh, section that normally we would go behind a curtain. We do not have that option. So we do know that former President Brendan Gill advocated for this and that it was something that was needed, but it just needs to be some, uh, uh, retweaking of the election process that we need to, uh, consider. On my next option, uh, uh, speaking point is that I am now aware that we can go to bond as a nonprofit. Uh, for several years, we have talked about the, uh, El- Elwetropolis program, uh, uh, project in the South Ward of Newark. Um, there's land that we wanted to acquire. So we want to know what is the process that our nonprofits can come together, um, as a group and actually go to bond, which we can actually, um, build the aquarium that will, will bring profits to our community and also can be paid back to the bond holders also. So we want to know what is that process? How can we also talk to the county about actually bonding some of the program, uh, projects that we want to take, uh, uh, into our, uh, South Ward to create a tourism divi- uh, division and, uh.
Sorry, secretary.
All right, I'll, I'll wrap it up. Uh, I want to thank you for taking the time to listen to, uh, my complaint and to looch it. And, uh, thank you again for the time and, uh, we'll talk about it at a later date.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, we do not have any, have any other callers waiting to speak.
Okay, um, um, thank you. Um, Mister President, we just have one, um, uh, comment sent by email and this one was sent by Kathy or Larry, uh, from, um, Pax Christie, New Jersey. And, dear Commissioners, uh, about two weeks ago, uh, the Essex County Jail Task Force, uh, met in public. It had solicited statements from people regarding the medical treatment at ECCF. The first person to testify was a woman who partner was in IC, a detention in your, ICE detention in your jail. She driven up from Triton to tell the task force that he had broken his hand a month prior to her appearing there and had not yet received even an X-ray. He had lost the use of the hand and had gone, um, according to his partner. Uh, these are the questions. Have you watched the video of the last task force meeting? If you haven't, it is available on the Facebook page for the Essex County Jail Task Force. I strongly suggest you do that. Have you inquired into whether or not this man has since received care? If you haven't, I strongly suggest you do that. How is it that you're keeping this man close to his family? He is from Triton, at least an hour away. You have you and the executive argued for years that we, you were doing people like this man a service. What have you done to advocate for the re- releasing our transfers when the jail is depopulated? August twenty-third is coming up soon and ICE has already started moving people, sometimes without notifying or providing any information to the attorneys who are representing him. Will you pass a resolution calling on the New Jersey legislation to pass the governor and the governor to sign A five-two-oh-seven slash S three-three-six-one, which will prevent ICE from opening more detention facilities in New Jersey? Uh, eliminating local bed space means that we will have limited local enforcement and keep people from being separated from their, their families. All in, our all incarceration is family separation, but ICE detention provides the added cruelty of being indefinite. And Mister President, that concludes our public comment session.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. As is our, uh, process, we will make sure that all of the questions will be answered in writing. Commissioners. Any questions or any comments? It's your session now. Anything you'd like to say before we adjourn? Mister President. Commissioner Mercado.
Um, uh, as the gentleman, um, that just last spoke, um, I have concerns about the information that was coming to, um, to me about the delay in voting machines, um, throughout the city of Newark. And I don't have confirmation of how many machines and if it was, uh, if it was just in Newark or if it was, uh, county-wide. And I would like us to, uh, look a little deeper into the vendor, um, of these machines as to why they were, uh, such, uh, such a delay, um, several hours. Um, that's just not acceptable. Um, and, uh, normally machines are there. Uh, my experience has been I've been doing, um, this, uh, we've all been doing this for a long time and machines are usually there, you know, a couple of days before election. Uh, they were always there, the tables, the chairs. Um, why these machines did not get to the locations that they were, um, designed to be at, um, for hours at a time is, um, something that is very concerning. So, and it, and it should not happen. So we should need, I think we need to look into why it happened and what can we do to prevent it from happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mercado. Duly noted and your concerns are being looked at. So yours and Mister Freeman's and everyone else, uh, that issue is being looked at. Commissioners, any other questions, comments? Commissioner Gill.
Uh, thank you, Mister President. Just, just a few comments. Want to, uh, thank you and, and all of the, uh, commissioners who, um, supported that resolution, uh, tonight to support the legislation which would, uh, ban, uh, county governments, um, from entering into contracts by adminis- uh, or local governments from entering into contracts with ICE to, to detain immigration detainees. Uh, so thank you, you know, for that. Um, and, uh, and also, um, you know, that we continue to look, um, at ways that we can assist and thank you, uh, for the questions that you raised, Mister President, you know, during the questions, uh, during the question and answer period, uh, with our, um, excuse me, with our, um, our, uh, legal aid, uh, vendors about, you know, is there even more that we can do as, as we depopulate, uh, this facility? Uh, but in addition to the depopulation, um, you know, there, there are, um, other things that I know we're going to continue to do, uh, to work with our federal partners, um, again, to, you know, to figure out how we end this practice altogether. So, uh, you know, at least that's what I'm committed to. I know many of you are, um, committed to that as well and I don't think we're immune to the fact that, uh, even though we're depopulating the population here, uh, we've always been concerned about the ramifications. Once people leave our, our facility, it's something we've gone back and forth on time and time again, uh, throughout this. But I want to thank everyone. Finally, on the, uh, on the election itself, um, you know, just to echo, uh, the comments of Commissioner Mercado, um, and, uh, and Mister Freeman tonight, um, there, there were absolutely some issues I think that, um, we looked at, uh, you know, as we moved towards, um, November. I know that the appropriate, um, election officials, administration, want to thank for their follow-up as well, have been notified. Um, you know, one of the ones that I just wanted to, you know, and to, to flag, not only on the, um, delivery, uh, but I can tell you that, um, specifically, uh, yesterday in Montclair, we had two issues that were completely mislabeled, meaning that, um, the Warden District, um, there were two, there was one polling location that had two machines and one, one, uh, they mislabeled each of the machines, which therefore required the wrong ballot to have to be given to people, including me. I voted yesterday in the County of Essex on a ballot, uh, that did not contain the correct people who were running for office as a result of the, um, mislabeling, um, of the, of the machines themselves and them not being able to process the ballots. Um, I, 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 I have to tell you, um, and, and this is a no blame, it is not meant to be blamed, but I, I just find that completely unacceptable. It was not fixed. It was flagged and it was not fixed. Um, and the solution was to, was to vote, uh, y- yesterday on a ballot in my, um, that did not contain the correct names of the people who were running for local offices as a result of the machines being, um, mislabeled. Um, secondly, I, I definitely think that, um, um, to Mister Freeman's point, um, some probably need to take a little closer look at the, uh, the, when the ballot is scanned, the ballot is face up, which we knew going in, but that does, um, so you have privacy as an individual when you're filling out that ballot, but when you hand, when you scan that ballot next to the board worker and where the board worker stands, there's absolutely more visibility into, uh, into an individual's choice than you normally would have. So I think that's a, you know, an issue that I think we can, we can, we can definitely deal with, but, you know, in terms of delivery, labeling the machines correctly, um, you know, these are, these are things that I, we just, we're just going to have to get, we're, get better at. And, and I think we would have had a, um, you know, a much more serious issue had this been a, a, um, a, 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 a regular general election. That being said, especially with the standard that the county set by doing such a good job last year doing during COVID and processing all of our ballots and, and making this transition. So understanding, we knew there were going to be some bumps yesterday as we were changing things for the first time, but, um, I just want to flag that, you know, Mister Jackson, for you to, to pass back to the, to the appropriate, uh, election personnel, um, you know, about, um, program machines, labeling machines, um, you know, ballots, uh, sample ballots being put in the wrong ba- excuse me, you know, being put in the wrong bags. These are just things that, you know, I don't think anyone would accept. I know you're on top of it, but I, I did feel that, you know, feel compelled to, to flag it tonight, you know, for, for you to make sure that it, you know, that we, um, that we do follow up. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Gill. Mister President, if it would be helpful, Commissioner Gill and maybe to, uh, the clerk, if you could give us, um, a list of some of the issues that were, that you want, that you saw and wanted to address and we can, uh, uh, look at those with the election, uh, folks and, you know. And, you know, may or may not be appropriate for the board to invite, uh, them in to, um, discuss.
No question.
As you, as you, you know, see fit.
Absolutely. I think that we probably need to start utilizing our committees more. And so, yeah, maybe we need to call them in, discuss so we can work out the kinks now because, you know, we have the general coming up in a, in a few months. So we want to make sure we iron everything out. So, yeah, that's something we probably wanted to. Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Thank you, Commissioner Gill. Commissioners, any other comments? Commissioner Vice President Palmares?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, I had the pleasure today of joining you and, uh, Commissioner Gill at Hendrix Field to open up, uh, the groundbreaking for a, um, a new program called First T that the county executive, uh, was, uh, initiating today. And that program, of course, uh, has been very successful at Weekway Park. Uh, and I'm sure you're going to want to say a couple of words about it, but over the weekend, uh, one of the products of the First T program, uh, Megadanya was, uh, at the U.S. Open and, uh, you know, just did exceptionally well. And, and I'll let you talk about it because I know she's the product of Weekway and, uh, that, that's your area. But what, what I think is really important... Programs where, uh, you know, we're finally being able to open sport. One has been labeled as a program in a sport that was reserved for only a few. I'm actually 50 years old now despite the very youthful looks, I hope. I don't think my colleagues agree with me, but I'm only 50 now and I only stepped on a golf course in my 40s. And so today, when I joined you and Brendan, my son joined me today and it is my hope that kids like him and other, uh, kids from urban areas and suburban areas and of all backgrounds and diversities will be able to be introduced to the sport, which as a kid I didn't think much of because I had no experience and no contacts and, uh, no ability to really gauge what it was all about. That's the first thing that I wanted to mention and I'm sure you're going to, uh, speak a little bit more about the performance of our, uh, star athlete in Essex County. Yeah, second thing I wanted to, just as a reminder, that tomorrow is, most Thursdays, we have the emergency food, uh, distribution event, which will take place at the Essex County West Side Park. That starts at 9:00 a.m. and will run while supplies last. And in conjunction that with that, we'll have a vaccine event there that runs from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. So for any residents who, uh, want to come and get a vaccine and a box of food, that's fine. You don't have to do both. You could do one or the other, but you did want to, of course, put that on everyone's radar. Thank you very much.
Thank you, VP, and thank you for the reminder. Yeah, it was a very exciting, uh, uh, opportunity at, uh, Hendrix Field and what the First T, uh, has meant to Essex County already. You know, and seeing, uh, Megadana, uh, this weekend play was just inspirational and exciting. You know, she started, she learned how to play right down the street from my house at Weekway Park. And to watch her on television this weekend was incredible. Uh, and she did so well as a 17-year-old. And she's headed to Stanford to, you know, for her education and to play golf. So, sky's the limit. And just her, you know, it was talked about earlier, her temperament, you know, uh, the smile, courtesy she wa, courteous she was and even how she interviewed. You know, it was of someone who is much more mature. But this is what the program, the First T is all about. You know, it's educational, athletics is, you learn how to interact with others. So it's so, uh, such a well-rounded program. So, you know, really inspired, um, by the First T and what, what we're doing, what's going on. It's incredible.
Mr. President, um, if you may indulge me, can I make a, may I make a comment?
Yeah, just put your name on the record.
Uh, your clerk to the board, um, I just wanted to say regarding this program, uh, my daughter, I went through this program and, uh, as a result of the skill that she developed, she started in it at, at, at seven and it was Renaissance and then it joined First T and she got the first scholarship from First T and ended up at high school as co-captain of her golf team as a result of this type of program at Weekway Park. Thank you. And my name is Deborah Davis Ford for the record.
Okay. Hey, listen, need a motion to adjourn. I mean, I would love to stay here all night. So moved.
Second, Mr. President.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Take care, guys. Be safe.
Bye, Mr. President.
Take care, everybody. Good seeing you.